All set? Good evening. This is the April 4th, 2019 meeting. Excuse me, folks, could you please have a seat? This is the April 4th, 2019 meeting of the Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission. Meeting in Town Council Chambers, it's now 7:01 PM. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Commission, please introduce yourself, starting on my right. Ryan Cotton, alternate.
Kenneth Wilk, alternate.
Bruno Maiene, Commissioner.
Leanne Rosi, Commissioner.
William Porter, Chairman.
Paul Leecey, Secretary.
Michael Riley, Vice Chairman.
Will Agresta, Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Rick Shokes, Town Planner.
Chris Grant, Reporting Secretary.
Okay, organizational and administrative matters. Couple of notices that the first selectman has asked be read at all town meetings. First one is regarding the budget referendum. During prior town council meetings, we all agreed that the change to our budget referendum date should be communicated widely, working in collaboration with our town clerk and registrars of voters. The attached postcard was mailed to all households in Monroe last week. So you should have all received a postcard notifying you that the budget referendum will be held on Tuesday, May 7. Next is the upcoming Route 25 detour this weekend. We've been informed by the state DOT that the next major work requiring a weekend detour on Route 25 is being scheduled, weather permitting, from 8:00 PM on Friday, April 5th through 6:00 AM on Monday, April 8th. This work will primarily consist of removal of bedrock and partial installation of a new box culvert, as during prior detours, business access will be maintained at all times. So that's this Friday through Monday morning. Next up, item number four, general public participation. Is there anyone here who would like to address the commission on an issue that's not related to an application or hearing? Seeing none, we'll move on. Item five, general appointments, we have none. Public hearings. We have a number of public hearings this evening. Okay, instructions for public hearings. There are two sets of microphones for both public address and recordings of the proceedings. Due to the need for recording, it is important to stand at the microphone at all times and speak into it loudly and clearly in order that everyone in the room can hear and capture what is being said. Individuals speaking from the seats will not be heard and will not be recognized to speak. Rules and procedures of hearing. Order of the hearing of an application. Points of order and responses will be entertained. Exhibits will be read for the record. Applicant and/or representatives will present the application and will answer commission questions. The floor will be open to those in favor. The floor will be open to those opposed. The floor will be opened to general questions or comments. The floor will be open to the applicant, who may take the opportunity for closing remarks or rebuttal, after which discussion will close. The applicant or his representatives are the final speakers. No comments shall be accepted from anyone unless recognized by the Chair. All questions and comments shall be addressed to the Chair, who will determine if an answer shall be provided and by whom. There shall be absolutely no discussion between speakers and the audience. Commission has no intention to limit the right of any person to speak, but asks that speakers try not to be repetitive. Please try to present new information. If something has been said before, the commission would invite you to indicate your agreement with previous speakers. At no time shall there be displays of emotion such as applause, cheering, shouting, or similar noise. This is critical as this hearing is being recorded. If this happens, you will be cautioned. A vote or demonstration by a show of hands, standing by the audience, or similar action will not be recognized. All parties are requested not to talk between themselves while the hearing is in progress. If you feel the need to talk, please step out into the lobby. All speakers, when recognized, must advance to the microphone to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. The Chairman reserves the right to cut off discussion if it is not relevant to the application or is presented in an inappropriate manner. This is a legal proceeding, much the same as what would occur in a courtroom setting. We request that all parties observe the proper decorum that would be observed in that setting. Please turn off all cell phones or similar devices. If you have a need to use these devices, please leave the room and use them outside. Okay, first up, we have SUB 2019-01, file number 1264C, 104 Elm Street. This has been postponed by the applicant to April 18th. Item number seven. Planning and Zoning Commission, Monroe, Connecticut, Notice of Public Hearing to be Held April 4th, 2019. In accordance with Connecticut General Statute, Section 8-7D, a public hearing will be held in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 7 Fan Hill Road, Monroe, Connecticut, on Thursday, April 4th, 2019, at 7:00 PM or sooner after concerning the following. SCP 2019-02, File Number 1610A, 45 Shelton Road, Residential and Farming District 1. Special Exception Permit Application for the Installation of a Blower Unit on the Northeast Side of Existing Water Supply Storage Tank, Including Ventilation Duct Work from Blower to Tank Roof, Control Panel Enclosure, and Underground Electrical Service to the Blower Unit. Owner/Applicant: Aquarium Water Company of Connecticut. Will, what do we have for exhibits?
Exhibit number one, permit of two women, modification application of attachments. Exhibit two, plan set. Exhibit three, a butter's list. Exhibit four, updated butter list. Exhibit five, ART PMZ comments. Exhibit six, ART engineering comments. Exhibit seven, updated plan set. Exhibit eight, updated PMZ ART comments. Exhibit nine, Architectural Review Board comments. Exhibit nine, Historic Mission Certificate of Approvenness with Conditions. And exhibit 11, Notice of Public Hearing, being card receives. That is all.
For the applicant?
Barry Parfitt, Bright Peers, Consulting Engineer for Aquarium Water Company.
Miguel Torres, Aquarium Water Company.
May I put the flashlight?
Yeah, you can just swap out where the blue one is. Can you use them? Is there a mouse? Mouse is on the shelf. Might have to turn it on, on the backside of it. Can you use that as a pointer?
This application is for an amendment to the special exception permit for 45 Shelton Road. This location is a 3 million gallon water storage tank owned by Aquarium Water Company. And this project, the purpose of this project is to improve the water quality running through this tank. By means of adding some equipment to the tank, that includes the installation of a mixer inside the tank and a surface aerator inside the tank, which will float on the surface, spray water inside, in order to improve the water quality. It also includes the addition of a fan unit, which will be outside the tank, ground mounted, adjacent to the tank on the northeast side of the tank. Aquarium would like to have this ground mounted for safety during maintenance activities and throughout its life cycle. Also, there will be the addition of a control panel just to the north of the existing pump station building. So, this components. This is a proactive project. There's not a safety problem with the water. It's addressing some water quality constituents proactively for the town. The original location for the fan was proposed to be on the southeast corner of the tank, closer to the pump station. This was closer, less excavation, but after discussing with the Planning and Zoning Administrator, it was suggested because of the duct work that is associated with this fan unit, which goes up the side of the tank and then across a portion of the roof and into an existing vent, that it would be visible to the public way. So, if I may, I'll go to Sheet C2, I believe. And on Sheet C2, you can see the fan unit in profile on the upper left-hand corner, what it looks like. The duct work is going to be 18-inch diameter aluminum duct work attached to the extra, attached to the tank by means of a magnetic mount. The fan unit is held up off the ground by a couple of feet on a stand in order to keep it out of the storm. Then enters the tank at the top roof near an existing roof vent. This application includes no changes to the site topography. There's no changes to the external lighting, or signs, or parking, or loading areas. That's all staying the same. Fences are staying the same. The sanitary and water services to the site remain the same as well. Applications so far that we've submitted were to the State Department of Public Health for the approval of construction or installation of water and water treatment works. This has been approved by the Public Health Department, and the letter approving this is part of the application process. Also, an additional letter was received approving the addition of the fan unit to this project. The Architectural Review Board, we submitted as well to the Town of Monroe and held a public meeting on March 12th, considering the aesthetics of this, and after considering that the fan unit had been moved to the backside of the tank, not visible from the front, from the public way, they had no modifications to, no recommendations for this application. We met with the Historic District on Tuesday, and also, they found no, they had no modifications to add to the application, except for the addition of some arborvitaries to the front side. This is not to screen off the fan unit, since that's already behind the tank, it's just due to provide additional screening of the tank itself. So, some additional arborvitaries will be added to the front, both to the west and east of the drive. I'll show you a drawing of where those will be located. So, according to the modifications or the recommendations of the Historic District, they asked for at least seven plantings on the front of the property, four on the west side, and three on the east side. So, those are approximately where they'll be located, but they'll be site located during installation. Since there are some trees out there already, we need to make sure that we put them in the best spot. Additionally, you'll see there's a drain field for the septic system on the west side as well, that we need to avoid. Additionally, we need to maintain access to the underground hydro pneumatic tank, which is to the east of the pump station building, located right here. For this planning and zoning application, we mailed out notifications to the abutting property owners and submitted the certificates or the receipts and returned mailings to the administrator before the meeting. Comments that we received from the initial planning, we included a request for exception to provide a survey, an A2 survey of the site. Survey has been done, survey was done after the installation of the tank, and it was an as-built survey stamped by a surveyor, and as part of the narrative to this application, on page two, we request a waiver for a survey for this particular application. According to Section 7.3.2, based on that, we are requesting an exemption because the proposed work is within, very close to the existing structures, which have been located on that as-built site, dated May 1980. The material was, we asked, we were asked to discuss the material of the, that will be used for the duct work. I can show you a photo of the, give you an idea for the aluminum material. This gives you an idea for the duct work material, aluminum. The duct work will be a circular 18-inch diameter and will be mounted to the side of the tank as discussed earlier. This aluminum will oxidize over time. It'll become less, it'll become more matte as time goes on, but with it being in the back of the tank, we feel like the visual, any concerns about the visual, being able to see it, will not be a concern because it's in the back of the tank. We'll make the addition to the title sheet noted by the review, and in conclusion, this project will improve the water quality for the Town of Monroe, and this project, this type of a project, the addition of an aerator, the addition of a mixer to a water storage tank, has been done in other locations throughout Aquarium's water system, and also, many times throughout many other parts of the country. We appreciate the opportunity to work with the town in preserving and maintaining this infrastructure. So at this time, if there are any questions, we'd be happy to discuss those.
Okay, thank you. Ryan?
No questions.
How long's your tank been there?
It was constructed, I think, in 1980.
1980?
Yeah.
Hey, the truth, I just noticed it maybe about a month ago. And I drive up and down there all the time, so. It's hidden.
Yeah.
But I didn't even notice it. But is this fan gonna make a lot of noise?
It will be, it won't make a lot of noise. How much noise will it make? Well, based on what we've received from the manufacturer, it will sound about like a typical residential air conditioning unit at the property line. Probably less because the topography around this site is raised, so there's about a 13-foot bank around the tanks, and also, there's trees around the side of the tank as well. So, that's what we anticipate. I can show you some photos of the site.
I did, that's why I didn't notice either. I'm getting old, or I just don't pay attention when I drive that way.
They camouflaged it well with that color, so.
Combination of both.
On the right-hand side of the tank, that's, around that side will be where the fan's located. But you can see on the right, there's a row of trees, both deciduous and evergreen trees, and as you go up around that side, you can see the bank. Here's a good photo from the side. That's actually facing the right. That gives you an idea for how high it is around the side.
So, that's where you're gonna put the duct work and all that kind of stuff, right there?
No, let me go to one more photo here. So, the duct, the fan unit will be right around here. The exact location to be determined, but it would definitely be around the backside of the tank. We want to make sure to avoid the inlet pipe, so we believe it would be located approximately right here, which is where it's shown on your drawings that you have. And then the duct work will go up the side of the tank. In the application, we have a photo that shows the approximate location as well on page three of the photos. So, that bottom photo gives you an idea for approximately where the fan and the duct work will be on the tank.
And you're saying that, my concern is, next door to that facility is a daycare, which I don't know much about, but I know that they probably have young kids and all that kind of stuff. And this fan is gonna, I'm assuming, gonna run all day, all night?
It will be, during the summer, spring, fall, during the winter time.
Not as much?
It won't be running, but yes. Otherwise, it would be yes.
And it's, how loud did you say it's gonna be?
About the level, sound level of a residential air conditioning unit at the property line.
Like one that you put in your window, or like one that, like central air? Because those are two different sounds.
Yeah, probably a central air unit.
It's gonna be that, oh, okay, well, that's, that's not that loud. Okay, thank you. I'm all set.
Do you know what the volume there, that's flowing in there, what's the volume it's gonna be?
I believe it's 3,000 CFM, cubic feet per minute.
So, you don't want to enclose this unit? Could you put an enclosure around the unit, fencing around the unit, or something like that? Because like he says, there's a daycare next to it. Just to take down the noise, would you be willing to do that?
It's a good idea. We considered that, but the fence is 15 feet off of the tank all the way around.
Right.
And we'd like to maintain access for the utility trucks, for them to service it. So that's why we would try to put it on the backside of the tank and not have a large enclosure around it as well.
We're just trying to cut down our noise.
Sure.
We have to worry about the residents around there, too.
Yes.
And we don't have, I really don't have an issue with you putting it there. I have an issue with the noise that maybe produce. I mean, that's a pretty high volume, so I don't know if it's the same as being, as an air conditioner. I, that's a lot of air you're pumping in there. It's gonna be a little bit louder than a central air, I would think.
I requested the sound levels from the manufacturer. They said it would be around 55 decibels at the property line. So, based on comparison, just to give people an idea of what it would sound like, that's about the size, the sound level of an air conditioning unit at the property line, so. But again, that's with nothing in between. That's a calculation based on the fact that it's just a flat surface, nothing in between the source. So here we have the 13-foot embankment, trees that have been there, mature trees, and their daycare, which is even further away, so.
So, there's nothing that they could put on the unit? Does the unit have any insulation on it to absorb sound?
This unit that we have does not. It has to, in order to have sound insulation on the inside, it would have to be a larger enclosure in order to be a safe distance away from the fan itself inside, so.
Do they make a unit like that?
I believe they do, yes.
They do make a unit?
Yeah.
And why do you, you just figured they'd need that unit for this project, or?
For this project, the fan has been purchased for the project, and I don't know for sure if they can add the insulation to the inside of the enclosure itself. We can certainly look into that.
Yeah, that would be, that would satisfy me if you put some kind of insulation.
On the inside, okay.
Lower noise. I have just one question I have.
Okay, thank you.
Well, did you say this was 3 million gallons, the tank?
Yes.
I was as curious as what, what does it serve, what area?
As far as I understand, the Town of Monroe. If you all could speak more to that.
Yeah, it serves the Town of Monroe and parts of Shelton, the store tank does. Because your water comes all the way from the trap walls treatment plant, which is on Huntington Street in Shelton, through a series of water mains, and it ends up in Monroe.
Okay. Michael? No questions. I don't have any questions, just one comment on your site plans. Correct the name of the street. You have it as Huntington Turnpike, but it's Shelton Road.
Okay.
Same as the address of the property.
Okay. We'll make that correction.
Will the member comment? I don't know. All right, let's see if anyone from the public has any input.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? No, 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 come down to the microphone. Name an address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Iannusen. I am the owner of the daycare right next to where this is being proposed. So, a lot of parents are just concerned of the volume, so I really appreciate both of you speaking up, and those are exactly the concerns I have.
Okay, I asked for people who were in favor of the application.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I'm not.
So, are you speaking in favor of the application?
No.
Okay. Hold that clock.
Okay.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition?
Okay. Want to start all over?
Well, your concern about the noise.
Yeah, so I, that's really just my biggest concern. You know, we have a nap time every day between 12 and 3. You know, I know when they just spray painted it, you know, the smell and everything was a big deal, and we had to really make sure that the odors were appropriate, and we had to stay indoors during certain, during certain times that they were doing.
Is your facility air-conditioned?
I'm sorry?
Is your facility air-conditioned?
Yes.
What type of air-conditioning?
Central air.
And how close to your area where the children sleep is your air conditioning located?
That's a good question. Well, it's outside, so it's not.
Okay.
Yeah, there's probably, there's a playground between the building and where the unit is.
Okay.
So I guess really, my only concern is if it is louder than we're expecting, you know, could it be enclosed? Could we get it where the volume can go down versus now we're stuck with it? So, Leanne, you really hit it perfectly. Like, you know, if we can't hear it, I have no problem, even if it's a little bit, I'll never be picky, but if it really is something, that's wow. You know, could it be a unit that can be fixed to make it quiet?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone with any general questions or comments? Okay. Back to the applicant.
Thank you. We appreciate the concern about the noise level, the sound level, and we are willing to consider the possibility of adding insulation to the inside of the unit, if it's something the manufacturer can provide an option to. We would certainly be happy to do that. As far as the sound level, we do see it as comparable to any other residential neighborhood where you may have less screening, less topography between houses, and air conditioner units from neighbors' house. So, by, with the determination that the sound level is approximately about the level of an air conditioner unit at the property line, we felt that this was in harmony with the zoning district, and it would be something that would be, felt that would not be, something that would disqualify this project. So, with that, we appreciate the opportunity to discuss this project with the town, and appreciate the opportunity to work together in preserving the, in maintaining this infrastructure. So respectfully, we request for you to close the hearing and act favorably on the application.
Thank you. What do you think?
Close it.
Okay, the hearing's closed. All right, next up, we have item number eight, ZCA 2018-02, File Number file number one zero one three D, five seventy-five Monroe Turnpike, zone boundary change petition seeking to amend the zoning map affecting approximately one point zero one acres, zone residential farming district one to business district one. Petitioner Antonio Ferreira, property owner, Carolyn W. Green. This is a hearing that's reconvened from March seventh. Will, any new, uh, exhibits?
Exhibit eleven, updated P&amp;Z comments. Exhibit twelve, response to ART comments by the applicant. Exhibit thirteen, updated ART engineering comments. Exhibit fourteen, uh, letter granting time extension by the applicant. Exhibit fifteen, updated map set. Exhibit sixteen, inland wetlands permit related to the daycare center, which is on a separate application. And exhibit seventeen, updated ART comments. That's all.
To the applicant?
Chairman, thank you, members of the commission, good to be before you tonight, uh, on this matter, five seventy-five Monroe Turnpike to change the zone from an RF one, uh, to, to B one zone. Uh, here on behalf of the applicant Antonio Ferreira, uh, as well as the property owner Carolyn Green, uh, we have, uh, addressed, I hope to be brief on, on this, uh, specific application. We have addressed the comments, uh, from the town engineer with regard to the revisions, to the, uh, to the zone change plan. Uh, as, as Will indicated, we received our inland wetlands approval. And, uh, I also submitted a response to, to Will, um, for, uh, regarding the narrative, um, to addressing some of the analysis in section nine point two, point two B three. Um, so we feel that we have, we have addressed the, the, the comments, um, from town staff, and, uh, like to move forward with this, uh, this application. Just as a, a, a kinda summation of, of this application, uh, for the record, uh, even though I know we, we went through, through this a little over a month ago, first, we believe that this zone change is in conformity with the neighborhood. It is, uh, the site is located directly across the street from two, uh, B one parcels, the old Goodwill and the Steve's Office Building. So it is not spot zoning, it, it directly is adjacent to, uh, B one zone. It's also a continuation of a commercial corridor that's south of it. It's really only separated by, uh, the land that's owned by Aquarian. So, uh, we do think it's in, in conformity with the neighborhood. We also believe it's in conformity with the P O C D. Uh, the narrative I submitted highlighted the specific sections of the P O C D, which we believe support this zone change. The P O C identified Route one eleven as a first priority for strengthening, uh, economic development. Uh, the site itself was, uh, indicated on a, uh, future land use plan a- as a potential location for future commercial development. And so, uh, we, we believe this application is in conformity with the P O C D. Uh, the site itself has an extensive history, um, as a, a mixed use, uh, with commercial use, um, which occupies the, the exist, uh, majority of the existing building. And, this application provides an opportunity to address the non-conforming use. And, you know, th- this non-conforming use for th- this property has, has been a, a blessing and a curse, really. Uh, and, and I think if I was doing a paper on the problem with non-conforming uses, I would probably point to this property as, as a prime example. It, it's a blessing in that you have, uh, this added benefit, this added asset, that you can have a, a commercial space you could have in home office. Um, so it's, it's, it's an extra selling point for the property, so you're attached to it, and, and it's something you don't wanna let go, because once you let go of it, it is gone. But on the other hand, uh, it, it's, it's kind of a curse, because with a non-conforming use, your use is restricted to that particular use. You can only use it for that. Uh, your size is restricted, you can't expand it to the rest of, of the building. Uh, and your development is restricted. Uh, you're not a commercial property, so you can't develop it, um, like a commercial property. So, the result is, it, it paralyzes the property. And, and I think people who know this property, who've driven by this property, uh, hundreds of times, kinda see that. It, it, it is a property that, that, um, uh, is stuck, uh, as it's been for decades. And by changing the zone, it would eliminate the non-conforming use, and really allows this property to develop to today's standards. To bring the parking, to bring the signage, to bring the lighting, to bring the drainage, to add a wetlands buffer. It allows this property to operate to today's standards while under your purview. Any type of different use that comes in here has to come in for a special exception permit. Um, and, uh, having this zone change will allow in the future for, for this property to progress with the zoning regulations. So if in ten years from now, somebody wants to take what has been a daycare for ten years and wants to turn it into a different type of B one zone use, they would have to update it to the standards that exist ten years from now. So I think we're, by doing this zone change, we're allowing this property to kind of get out of this paralysis, update itself, um, and, and bring it to today's standards. So on the whole, I, I think it, it is a, uh, it will be a great benefit to this property, to this neighborhood, and to the town, um, to allow it to move forward. And that's really all, all I have on, on the zone change specifically. Happy to answer any questions, um, and, and I, I think we, we've answered all staff's questions.
No question.
No question.
Any questions?
Uh, the property adjacent to the Aquarian, John, uh, Kellyan sixty-three Countryside Drive, that doesn't have access to Monroe Turnpike, does it?
I don't believe so, no. And on the north, we, we also have, we have a vacant parcel of land which has a, um, uh, has a brook that runs through it, and a significant amount of wetlands itself, so that property is also restricted. So really, on that side of the street, there's not going to be much development beyond, um, to the south, to the west, to the north, at all.
Thank you.
No questions. Alright, I don't have any comments?
I don't have any, but I think there is a couple of housekeeping things on the town engineer's comments that are still there, which can be, which is clarification things, so I don't think that's a problem. If you go forward with this, we can make that conditional.
Okay. Alright, Mr. Russo, let's see if anyone from the public has any input for us. Okay, is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? As opposed to a zone change? Mr. Hostler?
Lee Hostler, two seven two Stanley Road. Uh, I think this is a good application for that building. It's, that building has been a dental office for quite some time, or it was in the past. Uh, and I think this would be, uh, a very, you know, a good location for what they're, what they wanna do. Uh, they are, apparently are going to be, going to need to up to upgrade the, uh, facility for the state as well. And so I think that's, um, it's, it's a good use. I happen to be in, uh...
Mr. Hostler, let me just, just stop you for a second. We're talking about a zone change only at this time? Not, not a specific use for the site? Just a zone change?
Okay. Well, I think that, that will facilitate, facilitate, uh, the process.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this application? Name an address for the record, please?
Hi, Jennifer Papadopoulos, three sixteen Soundview Avenue, Shelton. And I know it's a zone chaining, change that you're, you're discussing, but, um, I just wanna say that this daycare is in a perfect location for me and my sister.
Excuse me, um, this is, we're only talking about a zone change for the piece of property. The, the potential use as a daycare is a separate application, and that's a separate hearing, which will be immediately following this one.
Okay.
But right now, all we're talking about is changing this piece of property from a residentially zoned property to a commercial business zoned property.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone with a general question or comment? Back to you, Mr. Russo.
Thank you.
Nobody wants to speak against it?
I didn't ask.
You did not ask?
Hold on, I, are you, anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Apparently I overlooked that step. Alright, seeing none, back to you, Mr. Russo.
Thank you. Great job, Peter.
Thank you, we appreciate, uh, everyone's excitement to see both these applications broken, but, uh, that's, uh, that's all for, for this application. And, uh, thank you, um, for everyone's time and feedback on this.
Close the hearing? Close it, please?
Okay. Hearing is closed. Seven forty-two. Alright, next up, item number nine. SEP two thousand eighteen dash twelve. File number one six zero seven A, five seventy-five Monroe Turnpike, assessor map fifty, lot sixty. Special exception permit application to permit a child daycare center use within an existing one-story building, including parking, stormwater drainage, and other site and building improvements. Applicant Antonio Ferreira, property owner Carolyn W. Green. This hearing is reconvened from our March seventh, two thousand nineteen meeting. Will, what do we have?
Exhibit eighteen, response to, uh, staff comments by the applicant. Exhibit nineteen, revised plan set, um, by the architect. Exhibit twenty, revised, uh, engineering plan set. Exhibit twenty-one, updated ART and MEO comments. Exhibit twenty-two, updated ART and Z comments. Exhibit twenty-three, comments from Conservation Water Commission. Exhibit twenty-four, uh, grant, landing, letter granting time extension by the applicant. Exhibit twenty-five, updated engineering plan set. Exhibit twenty-six, drainage computations. Exhibit twenty-seven, playground information. Exhibit twenty-eight, lighting specifications. Exhibit twenty-nine, uh, notice certificate of decision by the inland wetlands commission for a wetland permit. Exhibit thirty, updated engineer K F G comments. Exhibit thirty-one, updated P&amp;Z ART comments. Exhibit thirty-two, response to comments. And exhibit thirty-three, wetland buffer enhancement plan, um, by the applicant.
To the applicant?
Chairman, members of the commission, Chris Russo, uh, with Russo and Rizio LLC, offices at Fairfield, uh, Connecticut. Uh, good to be before you again, um, regarding this application for a special exception permit at, uh, five seventy-five Monroe Turnpike, uh, for a child daycare center. Uh, we have, um, uh, submitted a revised set, um, which we believe addresses the comments of, uh, staff. Uh, we've also received, uh, inland wetlands approval for this site. And, uh, I just wanted to go through, uh, some of the comments, uh, that we received from staff. The P&amp;Z administrators' comments, um, with regards to the referrals from the state. The state will not really act until we get something from, uh, from this board, whether it's as to the, the water supply, um, or, uh, the license. Uh, I'm, I'm doing financing for a daycare in Bridgeport, and I'm trying to get documentation from the state on it. They, they just will not, uh, that they're going to prove it. Until this, this daycare is built, and, and that's when they'll go and get a license. So, it's not something we can kinda give you, uh, um, documentation from the state of a, of a pre-approval. So unfortunately, some...
As long as your client understands that if the state mandates any changes, there's potential that they have to come back to zone.
Absolutely, and if there was, you know, any changes to the site that the state required, we, we, it would not be able to come under a special exception per- permit that you would approve tonight. We would have to come back to you for a modification, and, and my client understands that. And understands that probably his ability to operate, um, under the special exception permit will be conditioned on him receiving, um, a state license. Uh, so I've explained that to him, and, and he fully understands that. And the same goes for the, for the, for the water supply, if that's found to not be, um, sufficient. You just approved the zone boundary change, um, and, uh, um, so I, I believe in the referral section, I, I believe we have, uh, addressed everything. With regards to, skipping over the landscape plan, but to, with regards to, um, section one point nine point nine D, um, we believe, um, what we have submitted in this revised set satisfies your standards to allow our structure that we have. If you look here in the parking area, this was, you know, obviously approved by wetlands. We had much discussion about this, um, that... We have our detention system located right here, uh, and then we have a pipe running out to a level lip spreader. These are all setback ten feet, um, the, the, uh, detention system and the level lip spreader, you'll see a notation there that shows that it's ten feet off the property line. And, uh, in conformity with, uh, that regulation, uh, it, it, clearly the area of it is not twenty-five percent of the side yard setback of this property, um, which, you know, extends, you know, quite deep past where the level lip spreader is. Um, and, uh, as, as far as visually, um, really the only thing that you could possibly see, um, is the stone on top of the level lip spreader, um, which is accurate, it's flush. There, it, it's right near the water course that is, is right there. Uh, the neighboring property in the north spoke on the earlier application, have the unlikelihood of that being developed, um, and the water forces in between. And so I, I think this level lip spreader is, is, um, uh, any neighboring property will not impact that. It's really just stone, uh, that you would see, uh, flush with the ground. So we believe we satisfy the standards of, uh, one point nine point nine D, and ask that you, um, you approve the site plan as, as we have it, um, with these structures. Uh, a photometric plan was submitted. We moved a, a light pole, uh, out of the thirty yard, uh, thirty foot, thirty foot setback. Uh, you can see that light pole located right there, um, and there's the thirty foot mark right here. So that light pole is located outside of the thirty foot setback. And, uh, we submitted a photometric plan showing that we, uh, will be able to, uh, illuminate the parking area. With regards to the landscape plan, uh... Let me pull up the wetlands buffer. As, as part of our wetlands application, we added this extensive buffer along the back. So there, there is a lot of, that runs from this side over to this side. Um, and, and so there is extensive landscaping here. Um, we are, we're preserving some trees that are, uh, located, um, in this corner of the property, which if you've driven by it, you can see it kinda curls into the house, um, uh, and really screens this backyard area. Uh, there is some existing landscaping, uh, here in front of this, uh, stoop, uh, and also here. And the applicant intends to, uh, to, uh, edit those areas, trim those areas, maintain those areas, adding some perennials.
Do you have a landscape plan?
We have this plan.
That's a wetlands landscape plan. Do you have a zoning landscape plan?
We do not, we have, we have this plan which kinda makes note of what we have intended to do for the landscaping on this property. And then on the site plan, it talks about...
Of the planning and zoning regulations. This meets the requirements of the inland wetlands commission, but it doesn't address any of the landscape requirements that are part of the zoning regulations.
Well, we, we're not really proposing to, besides what we're doing for the wetlands buffer and the reseeding of where, um, the, the second driveway is that we're removing, and we're gonna reseed, we're not proposing any new landscaping. And one of the reasons for that is, it will be a commercial property, but its appearance is obviously as a residential dwelling, and...
But it's not, Mr. Russo. You're applying for a zone change to make this a business zone, so this is gonna be a commercial building. If that, if you get that zone changed, and you develop this house into a commercial building, it's going to be a commercial building, it's not gonna be a residential structure anymore. It's not going to be a residential structure anymore.
And I understand that, Chair. I think what, in talking with my client and with Bill Kenny, the appearance of what we are proposing for this specific application, it still looks like a residential dwelling. And so we are looking to beef up the areas in front of the building, improve the, you know, perennials in the front, beds that are in front of the building, to make it look like it's a single-family dwelling that, you know, has normal landscaping that you would see in front of a single-family dwelling. Something like planting trees at an even space in front, you know, every five feet, every 10 feet, something like that, we felt would change the look of it to make it seem something like you would see at the C V S. And so we just thought we could beef up what is existing there. So that's why we didn't submit a landscape plan, because we really aren't, you know, we're making a lot of improvements with the plantings in the back.
Which is part of your inland wetlands approval. You're doing that for your inland wetlands approval. But how are you fulfilling the requirements of the zoning regulations?
Well, I believe we do meet the requirements of the zoning regulations. We are trying to preserve as much of the existing vegetation as exists. We have these trees over here that we are trying to preserve. And remember, a lot of this parking area is already existing. If we go back to the site plan, here's the existing parking area. And what we're adding is just in this area. And that's only going to result in the loss of two trees of greater than 20 inches in diameter. And we're removing this entire asphalt area, this second driveway, and we're reseeding it. So we believe we're making minimal change to the exterior of this site and minimizing the clearing and maintaining the existing vegetation. The variety of shade trees, species, I mean, species, if you go by this property, I mean, trees surround it on all sides, basically, and into the front. And again, it's only two trees that we are removing. So we believe there's a lot of trees that surround this property. And we thought some type of landscaping that you would see in front of a C V S or any other typical commercial building wouldn't be really appropriate for the site. We have no landscape islands in the parking area. It's not a retail center that needs landscaping for, to kind of encourage along where pedestrians are walking. You know, certainly, I know that there are, there's the addition of the dumpster. If you look at what's the wetland buffer plan, there is planting behind it, but we could certainly agree to a condition of approval that that landscaping also be extended around the dumpster here. And if the commission would like to see more landscaping, more native shrubs, more ground cover...
Section 6.2.2 of our zoning regulations clearly defines what's expected on a commercial piece of property for landscaping. And I don't see that on the drawing.
I guess, Chair, we're happy to add native shrubs, native ground cover, where the commission feels if it's appropriate to screen.
Mr. Russo, that's, it's not our job to design landscaping for your project. Your design team is supposed to present a proposed landscape design that we review and approve.
And if, Chair, if you're saying that there needs to be more landscaping, we thought what the site provides was sufficient.
Right now, your plan shows no landscaping. Now, you're telling us that there are planting beds and shrubs in front of the house, but that's not indicated on the drawing. So we have no way of knowing what's there. It's supposed to be on the plan.
It's existing, and they're really just flower beds that are in front of the house and that we would plant, as you would find at a normal house. If, and we looked at it, and we thought that this landscaping was appropriate for how this particular property, you know, the fact that we're maintaining the existing building. So if we could add native shrubs and ground cover in certain areas and produce a landscape plan that had that, and as part of a condition of approval, we would be happy to, to add some native shrubs and ground cover. We just didn't think it was, is really necessary for this particular application.
That'll be up to the commission, then, to determine. But I'm just pointing out to you that the plans and the application that you submitted don't fulfill the requirements of the zoning regulations. So rather than belabor this issue, why don't you continue with the rest of your presentation?
Sure. So the only other thing I wanted to address was the traveling for, or the back, I should say, for the one space that's here, the end, space eight. We have provided, we extended the parking area back five feet here. So this space eight could, in conformity with regulations, back into this five-foot area and exit. You know, practically speaking, this is, we think this is the appropriate location for this, for this area, because, you know, if you're backing out of this space, car can't take a 90-degree angle and back up out here. So we feel that. And we have actually a turn plan that shows how that vehicle would turn back here and then be able to exit out of that space. So we believe the design of the parking area in the rear here with this five-foot area is sufficient for this vehicle to be able to back up and exit out of the parking area.
What size dumpster did you design that for? Chris, what's the dimensions? Yeah. Don't you think that's like twice the size of what you probably really need?
As the commission says, it's, right now, it's a daycare. Two years from now, it could be something else.
Well, they need a bigger dumpster to accommodate, modify, push it back to the...
If they needed, yeah, I don't think this particular use... By the way, my name is Mike LaRosa. I'm a landscape engineer with Huntington Company, representing the applicant. Again, we don't anticipate that much, but it's initially eight yards.
A lot of diapers.
I mean, it's a really big dumpster for the size of that facility. You probably can get away with half that size and still accommodate the same back edge. And that turns out to not be possible, you can come in and modify.
We can go small. Oh, okay. So I think, I think we've addressed the, a lot of them were some clerical changes, which I believe we addressed in our revisions. I think, I think I've covered basically everything.
Loading zone?
Oh, loading zone, yes. Thank you, Chair. We've requested that this commission waive the requirement of the loading zone. There's, parents have to bring their own diapers and food and things like that. So there's, there's really not much for the daycare itself that it requires. It's not going to have trucks really dropping off. A lot of the supplies will be brought in by staff. The daycare is going to have a van that is going to be used to bring in supplies. So it really, we don't believe it requires a loading zone. In the future, we show a loading space here. And, you know, in theory, this space could go as far back as possible. But in theory, somebody could come in with an application and tear down the existing building and build something new and put the, put the loading zone here. So we feel the site provides plenty of space for a loading zone in the future. Not knowing what somebody might in the future develop, if they could take down the building or within the existing building. But in the future, somebody could, with a curb cut here, enter over on this side of the property and have a loading space behind, behind the existing building. I believe I've answered all the questions and the comments. If there's any others, we have our architect here, Robert Tobin, happy to answer any questions, and Mike Maturla from Huntington Company.
Good, Ryan. The fence around the back, did we go further in whether or not that needs to have a gate or something in the height of that?
Commissioner, I think, I think at the last hearing, we said that we would agree to a condition of approval to have the gate in. And if, for some reason, the state...
Needs an exit was...
Needs an exit or doesn't want it, I mean, you know, that, we kind of, they control on that.
Okay, just wanted to know.
But we'd have, we'd be happy to agree to that as a condition of approval. Have no opposition to a gate.
That's all for me.
Thank you.
I have no questions. No questions.
How many trees do you plan on removing from that property?
Sorry?
How many trees?
How many trees exist on the property?
How many plan removing to do your work?
Okay, so the, of, the regulations require us to identify trees that have a diameter of 20 inches or more. You can see right there, there is, there's a 30-inch oak and a 24-inch oak right here. Those are the only two. There are, I think there are a couple of smaller saplings that are in between those trees, but, but nothing besides those two that are greater than 20 inches in diameter.
So totally, I mean, I understand the ones you're identifying. How many are you taking out of your total?
Two, two trees. Legit trees, yes.
All right, how about shrubs or any of that, how many you put the driveway in?
Robert El Tobin, Robert El Tobin Architects, representing the client. On the landscape, I would like to address the landscaping plan and the shrubs. The landscape, we looked at maintaining the site in its current condition, and thus, we felt that there was no need to submit a landscape plan to show where we're going to remove a driveway and plant some grass. In the front of the building, where we're going to remove some shrubs, which was requested by the Architectural Review Board, that we pull the shrubs out of there that were gangly and what have you. We just felt that we would replace those with some smaller shrubs, just to hide the foundation. And that was the extent of our landscaping plan that we were looking at. So there are the shrubs that are the left side of the property in the front of the front window, which are probably 40, 50 years old, which are all grown out and scraggly. We were just going to cut those back and plant some more lower-cut shrubs in their replacement. And the landscaping plan was the, as I said, removal of the driveway. We were going to plant grass there and just keep it as open as it exists today, and thus maintaining the visual of the site today in our project as we went forward.
Well, the reason why I'm saying this, because we usually have a landscaping plan that we can look at. And without us having a landscaping plan, we have no idea exactly about removing the shrub, you're going to put little shrubs in there, coming in. I just don't understand why the landscaping plan didn't come with this application. I mean, I just, I mean, it's, it makes it hard on us, because you expect us to approve something, and we don't have a plan to see what we're even going to approve. You say, well, you're going to do that, and you're going to do this, and you're going to do that. That doesn't really work. I mean, if you have a plan, I understand what you want to do, but it would be better if we had a plan here.
We understand that it would be better. It was an oversight on our part, because we kind of looked at it as is, is what we're going, what you see is what you're going to get, other than the fact that we're moving the two trees, which we have talked about. And that's why we didn't submit a landscape plan, because there was no anticipation of any additional real plannings taking place. So I apologize for that.
Can we get a landscape plan?
We could put one together and, you know...
Because you say you're not doing any other plantings, but you just said that you're going to remove some shrubs and put some shrubs in.
We're going to take...
That, to me, sounds like landscaping. I'm sorry, I mean, I don't...
If you talk about two, three court shrubs, that's the extent of our landscaping plan. Something the size of these two chairs would be about the size of the shrubs we're putting in. Basically, foundation plannings up against the house, where right now, there's shrubs that are probably as large as that table there, which are old, you know, 50 years old and haven't been maintained. We're going to rip those out and put some more, two shrubs up in front of the front windows, just to hide the foundation, because the house sits high on the foundation. But, you know, I mean, we could easily stipulate to approval showing a landscape plan that, you know, was reviewed with staff. But we're not doing a planning on any extensive landscaping at all. But we could, we could easily provide that and work out the details of the landscaping with staff, if that's acceptable to you.
I think you need a plan.
Just a few questions. I assume the playground structures are all, they'll all be located within the playground area, the fenced playground area in the back of the building?
Yes. Yes, Commissioner, it'll all be located within that area.
And then the light fixtures, you mentioned that there was one, one in the building, I believe, removed.
Yes, right there, right here in the middle.
And then there's a light pole in the parking area?
Correct.
Because if the, I believe it shows two on the photometric plan.
I think it's two heads.
There's two heads?
There's two on one pole.
Okay.
I think the optics might be different on one than the other.
Okay. That's all.
The tree in the front left of the building, it's going to be removed? There's a huge tree there that's practically covering the building.
This tree right here?
Yeah, it's going to stay?
Yes, in the front left, yeah. These, all these trees over here are staying. There's an overgrown, there's an overgrown shrub right here that really almost blocks the door. Mr. Tobin, I think, was talking, that's the, that's the one he's talking about removing. And then the only other trees are these two. That are being, I mean, there's trees from here all the way around back here and all the way over here.
I mean, the areas that are going to be, this will get somewhat impacted as well when you start changing the parking lot. The area you should be focusing on, how this is well-covered, is really, these two areas, and this tree line is, well, on this plan, it's not clear, but on the other plan, it looks like it's coming way back here. So this corner, these two corners, and then this front there. And again, I think you're misinterpreting what the code is requiring. It's not requiring you to do a C V S-type planting. You're doing, you would do a planting that's relevant to the scale of this project. you would do a planting that's relevant to the scale of this project. So, I mean, you're looking at like an ornamental, an ornamental, and some shrubbery. But without being on the plan, the commission doesn't know what it's approving, and the inspectors won't know what to look for.
Again, the, the thought with that, and I, my client is proposing extensive improvements to this property. I mean, a completely new drainage system for the parking area, repaving the, the parking area, a, a wetlands buffer that runs, um, from one end, uh, from one side to the other side, a brand-new septic system, and a, uh, entirely redoing the inside of, uh, this building. So he, it's not like he's not proposing a, a significant investment into this property, into upgrading this property. Um, and with regard to the landscaping, we felt that there would be minimal change in the front. Um, if adding landscaping to those areas mentioned, um, was, was something that the commission really wanted to see, then I, I, I don't think we would have a problem agreeing to that. As a con-
Can I get up?
This is, uh, Tony Ferreira, uh, who's the applicant.
So, uh, that won't be a problem with the, uh, landscaping in front of the building. Um, I just don't understand as to why, uh, uh, plan wasn't submitted. I understand that was, uh, that was brought up today, uh, for the, um, landscape plan, and we didn't have enough time to get it done.
It's, it's in the regulations, and, and your design team is, should be well aware of what our regulations require. Um, so this is not something that was dropped on them at the last minute that we need a landscape plan. I mean, it's, it's a requirement for any commercial development.
I, anyways, what you mean to say is, is that we, we felt that the wetland buffer plan, um, addressed that, uh, what we were going to do, or what we were planning to do with landscaping.
So that won't be a problem. We will, uh, we will submit a, um, a, uh, landscape plan. If that's what the, uh, board wants, then we'll do that.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Um, I just have a couple of things. You received a letter, or a copy of a letter, dated February seventh from Aquarian, that, um, we haven't gotten any response from you
Chairman, that, uh, letter was discussed at the, um, at the inland, inland wetlands commission hearing. We went through that, and a lot of the, um, remarks, uh, that, or the, the things that he asked for, we addressed, um, at the inland wetlands commission. Um, and I actually spoke with him, uh, to go through what we're doing. Uh, one of the, uh, one of the issues was the barrier during construction, um, and I believe we're, we have a double barrier. We, we, we made that barrier much more expensive, extensive. He also had not seen the wetland buffer plan, so we sent that to him as well. Um, and, uh, also sent him the approval letter from the Health Department regarding the septic system. So-
And they had a request that all contractors and employees be informed that they're working in an important public water supply area, and that certain issued, certain phone numbers and contact information be posted prominently on the site.
And that, that's listed as a note on the plan?
Actually, basically what you're saying is, you're, you're gonna comply with the request of Aquarian.
Correct, and I did reach out, after we, I had submitted this information to him, I reached out to him again, and I just have not, I, I, he, he never reached back out to me. I don't, uh, when, when we closed the inland wetlands hearing, he had also not reached back out to them. Um, and inland wetlands was satisfied with how we addressed his concerns.
Okay, well, so long as you're telling us that you're going to address all of these concerns, that's, that's sufficient. Landscape we talked about to death. Um, we're gonna reduce the size of the dumpster and the enclosure. Requesting waiver on the loading zone. There's a few housekeeping issues with the zoning table that I'm sure are not issues. Ryan asked you about the fence. Okay, those are all the questions and comments I have at this time. Will, do you have anything else?
I don't think so. Scott's here too.
What's that?
Scott's here too.
Oh, Scott. Didn't see you there. Do you have any, uh-
Uh, yeah, I do. Uh, there was a number of items that were not addressed. The bond estimate form was not stated. Uh, the guy's also on the side, marking up on the sidewalk.
Let's, let's do them one at a time. Mr. Russo, do you have a bond estimate form?
Can you give one, Scott?
Okay, so, uh, the other items, I was wondering what you were doing with the sidewalk.
Yeah, that, that's an issue that we'll, we'll bring up during deliberation, um, because that, you know, the commission has to discuss that and make a decision.
Yeah, I mean, initially, I was, I, I, I was just wondering, because of the bond, because in terms of, uh, public improvement, you know, performance related, as related to, as opposed to the, um, site stabilization or restoration. But then, as I thought it through some more, I'm thinking that unlike a subdivision, if something were to happen and they did not, uh, build it, then we wouldn't necessarily be obligated to finish the sidewalk. So I guess it could just be a site stabilization.
What's your opinion on the, the proposed bond amount of two thousand seven hundred and fifty?
Actually, that, that'd be very close to what I was thinking. The majority of the stabilization and restoration is in the upper area of the land, so a, uh, bond.
Okay.
All right, uh, I was also looking for roadway geometry and rain layout in the area. Uh, and some input from, uh, traffic perspective relative to turning in there. I realize it's not, something not a, a heavy use. However, you know, vehicles, especially the ones with children pulling into that parking lot, just wanted to make sure that things are not up with, uh, the line striping in the road, and if there was any, uh, potential for tweaking of the, uh, line striping for determining that stacking. Uh, usually someone would take a look at that and just provide some recommendations. You know, either it doesn't need to be touched, or-
Well, that, that'll pretty much fall under the state's.
Yeah, it, it would, yeah, and, but it does play into the town, and in terms of the driveway itself, and where it is, and remaining, and things like that. So usually, we get that information at this level before it goes to the state, just, it, it's reviewed by both, uh-
Let's defer to the state on that.
Okay, so, um, just minor items, uh, offsetting the line, centerline line striping going in, add returning radii for a, a service truck to get in there to, to, uh, access the dumpster. Uh, the problem with this property is that that parking lot is just too small for a small, uh, truck. So, uh, we can get it so the truck can get in, but the truck's not gonna be able to turn around. So, uh, it, it's gonna force it back out on the road. So, I, I don't know what else we do. I mean, I was suggesting that they increase the, uh, nortally radius of the driveway, so at least the truck can, a small thirty-foot truck can get into the, the parking lot. But as I said, the, the less the parking lot's, it not gonna be able to turn around.
Dumpster.
So, I mean, actually works with, yeah, that's-
There's, there's their, uh-
Yeah, well, see, that, that truck, that will go in, but if, if there's a car there coming out, the truck is stopping, and that's a hazard in the road, because you got traffic moving, and all of a sudden, the truck stops and it's waiting. If there's a car making it out, and the truck stops up there, how's the car see? Truck's gonna be in the way.
Yeah.
So, uh, what I like to try to do is to get, get it so that the truck can make that turn in without crossing over, uh, the centerline of line striping, so it's safer and you're not getting that situation. I believe the state looks for that as well. If you recall, the property over on Main Street, the attorney's office, the state made them widen beyond what I was asking for, for that very reason. Uh, handicap sign, the baller, and baller, and the handicap space just needs to be indicated. Then I've got some, um, drainage, uh, comments on the drainage calculations that I, I had listed there.
Hold on. Handicap sign's gonna be out in a baller?
It, it's, it's on the, on the plan, and it's, except, it's also in the detail.
Yeah, I think it's, I may have similar comment, and it's not necessarily consistent with the standard that we use across town, but it's, it's a housekeeping, it's not a idea. Go ahead, Scott.
And I had a couple of comments on the drainage, unless you want me to go into detail, I can work with that on that.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, and then, um, just some, uh, tweaking on the details that were provided, uh, listed under each one. And then, uh, verification of, um, acceptance by DOT. I, I did actually talk to the drainage engineer at DOT, 'cause I was a little concerned about the, the overflow from this detention system does not go toward the wetlands in the back, it goes out to the road. I was a little concerned about that, but I had a conversation with DOT, and, uh, they're okay with that. They, they think they're gonna be okay with that. They haven't seen the plans yet. So, my level of concern has gone down from that. And that's all I had.
All right, well, everything, everything is gonna be contingent on state approval. Okay, thank you. Anything else from Scott?
Chair, if I could just address, uh, just a couple of the comments real quick on that.
Sure.
Uh, we, we did have that discussion during the inland once, uh, application about the drainage, and also, uh, I think a little bit about, um, getting into this site. Um, and again, I talked to my client about the fact that he's got, he has to go and get this approved by the state, and that'll be a condition on this approval. And so, they will, you know, and it, they will vet this and, and make sure it's designed properly, and if he has to change it, then he's gotta come back. And, and so, um, he understands that. Um, and I, 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 I think we discussed at the last hearing our stance on the sidewalks, um, uh, but since it was a while ago, uh, we don't feel that they'd be appropriate at this location. Um, the property of south can't be developed, uh, that the property to the north is, um, extremely hindered from being developed, um, and, and don't believe a sidewalk could be connected to it. Um, so we, it would just be a sidewalk for, for this site, and, and that would be the, the length of it, and then it would be cut off from everything. So, um, to us, we, we don't believe that, that this particular application, um, should require a sidewalk.
Okay.
Just to restate.
You set?
Yes, if, if the, um, commission wants to see a, a landscape plan-
Before, before we get into it-
Okay.
Let's see if we have any public input.
Okay, sure, absolutely, Chair.
We should have some public input. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Now is your time.
Say my name again?
Yes, please.
Jennifer Papadopoulos, 316 Soundview Avenue in Shelton. And I just wanna say that I think this is a great location for a daycare. It's right on my way to work. It's a perfect opportunity to have my kids and my sister's kids go to daycare together. Um, it's a great location. Um, and I heard this has been coming, and I can't wait for it. I think it's a great idea, and I hope it happens soon.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this application?
Yeah, I've been in town for many years.
Name and address for the microphone, please.
Isabel Texera, 49 Old Castle Drive. And, um, we definitely need more daycare centers in our town. Being a mom that has not been able to get into one, because they do get overstaffed with kids. So it is a great location. It is definitely perfect for our town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
Good evening. Uh, my name is Lucy Texera, and I live at, uh, 37 Riviera Lane in Trumbull. Um, and I'm here really as a character reference for the Ferreras, who are the proposed, um, buyers of this property. I also happen to work for Aquarian Water Company, and, uh, was very aware of the requirements, uh, that are necessary in order to protect the watershed. Um, and I've known the Ferreras for a very long time, and know that they will protect that property, uh, in the best interests of the water supply and the community. Um, so I hope you approve it, because they will, um, ensure that they take, uh, the utmost care of, of that property, um, and will bring, um, you know, revenue to the town, um, as well.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Come down, please. Name and address.
Tina Pinho, uh, 683 Elm Street in Monroe. And, um, I think it's a great idea, and I like the fact that it looks like a house. It's more inviting and welcoming to a small child, as opposed to like a, you know, a big commercial building. And, um, damn fort, I think it's a great idea, and I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Philumina Mora, 503 Musil Road. Um, I also would, um, go for it, because I have grandkids, my daughter's pregnant, and I think it's a great location, very close to me, to bring my grandkids there. She's born.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
Hi, my name is Jennifer Gankovas, and I live at 15 Edgewood Road in Monroe. Um, I'm a full-time employee. My husband works full-time as well. Uh, this location would be extremely convenient for us to drop off our son at. We rely heavily on daycare, so this would be very convenient. And, um, I echo everybody else's sentiments about daycare. So look, very quickly, you need some other locations here, and we need the help here. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sandra Mora, 503 Musil Road. Uh, obviously, I'm pregnant, and I find it very difficult to find a daycare. It's right around the corner, so it would be perfect, and I also have a young son, so it'd be a perfect location for me.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
Lee Hostler, 272 Stanley Road. I think I could say what I wanted to say earlier, was that I happened to meet, uh, a person from, um, a facility similar to this, just down, uh, the other end of, uh, Route 111. And I asked how they were doing and how busy they are, and she said, well, we're basically filled to capacity. So if there's any other overflow capacity, this would be a, a good item to have, or a good business to have into town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the application? Any general questions or comments? Okay, back to you, Mr. Russo.
Thank you, Chairman, and, um, thank you for the comments. Thank you, Chairman, and thank you for the comments in support of this application. We, we've worked hard on this project, we've worked on it for a very long time, and we've worked hard on, on a number of improvements to this property, and, and we think we have a great project. I'm very cognizant of what the commission is saying to us regarding the landscaping. If the commission would be more comfortable if we submitted a landscape plan, continued the hearing and submitted a landscape plan, and tried to add landscaping in locations that, that Will indicated, we would be happy to do that. We do feel that we could address that in a post-approval process, but if, if the commission would be, would feel more comfortable if we continued to just address that specific issue, I, I think we've addressed all the others, but we, we, we would, we would be happy to, to do that.
Well, here, here's the situation we're in. Because this application got postponed two or three times, we're now at our statutory time limit for this public hearing.
I, I, I believe I have more extension time to be able to extend the public hearing for another two weeks.
You, you can extend the public hearing.
I can extend it, yes, yes.
We cannot. You, you can request that we extend it.
We, we'd be happy to, to grant any extension to keep the public hearing open.
I'll just, I'll call the commission and see what they, what they feel about whether we should close the hearing or leave it open to get a landscape plan.
Yeah, I would think a landscape plan should be.
Yeah. You already said yes.
Well, you have my answer, so.
I agree that we need a landscaping plan.
Okay.
Yep, keep it open.
All right, I, not that you're voting on it.
We get, we get the point.
You know, I, I suggest that you have your design team read through the landscaping section of our regulations. It's pretty clear about what we expect and require on commercial projects. It's not a CVS, you know, magnitude of plantings, but it's, it's more than a couple of shrubs. So, if you're willing to grant us an extension so we can leave this hearing open, the commission would appreciate that, and we would like to see a landscape plan.
Absolutely, no problem, Chairman. Thank you for the feedback. I, what, what I think we would go back to, and I, I would obviously talk to Bill Kenny about this, but we would look to add landscaping here in the front of the building, in this area, in this area, and possibly also back here. If there, if the commission felt, if, if there was some comment towards that, then, that I could then go back.
I think your, your best bet would be to review the, the regulations and, and talk to staff.
Okay.
About the will, about, you know, what we generally require for landscaping on this type of project, and take it from there.
Happy to do that.
Now, how quickly do you think you can do that?
We, uh, to the eighteenth, I think, right?
Our next meeting is in two weeks, but you would have to have this submitted by next Wednesday.
We will, we will, we will definitely strive for that. If I, we would agree to grant an extension of the public hearing to four eighteen. If in that time, if we fail to get the plan in on time, I'd just let you know that we would further grant an extension to the next hearing beyond that in May.
Okay, great. And we'll continue this to April eighteenth.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, thank you for the feedback.
Eight thirty-five. We're going to take a five-minute recess. Time, time's ticking.
Next meeting?
Motion, Chair. Okay, we're good? We're good?
Can I, can I ring again? Yeah, dude, Bill, one day when you don't show up, I'm better.
Okay, we're back, and it is eight forty-two, eight forty-three P. M. Next up, item number ten, SCP two thousand nineteen dash oh one, file one six zero nine eight, Seventeen Enterprise Drive, Sessormap one oh four, lot two dash five, Industrial District Two, Special Exception Permit Application for reinstatement of elapsed industrial lot development, including site modifications in support of said reinstatement. J and S Industries LLC, Jarrod James and Cheryl Villmedico, members, owner, applicant, reconvened from March twenty-first, two thousand nineteen. What do we got, Will?
Exhibit six, certified now receipt of green card without further notice. Exhibit seven, response to comments by the applicant. Exhibit eight, updated mindset. Exhibit nine, updated A R T engineering comments. And exhibit ten, updated D N Z A R T comments. That's all.
For the applicant?
Good evening, members of the commission. For the record, my name's Kevin Solely. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Sole Engineering. This is located here in Monroe at five oh one Main Street. We're here to continue the discussion regarding the property at Seventeen Enterprise Drive. I think we had a very good discussion at the last hearing. We went through the presentation in detail and talked about what we were proposing. And what we did is we submitted some revised drawings, which were revised to reflect the discussions held with the commission, and also to address some of the comments from staff. Just to orient everybody, again, this is part of the Pepper Street Business Park, Seventeen Enterprise Drive was part of, constructed as part of Phase One. Here's an aerial depicting the existing site. Across the street is the park, is All-Star Transportation, the town municipal stormwater basin, Mondial Automotive, and five hundred Pepper Street, Caruba, is right on the corner here. So, again, the site was previously approved. It was constructed, occupied, and now we're here trying to close up and, and close out the C O. We did provide some additional information. We provided another conservation easement map in our previous submission, and while I know one of staff's comments had to do with the actual easement document itself, I know Attorney Paul Sole, I think he spoke to Will about that document, and that actually has been drafted, and that will be provided and prepared in accordance with staff's requirements. We have our zoning location survey, and we have our site plan. So, again, I, since we received comments, we submitted all the revised information as of last Wednesday to make sure we had to come at the deadline. We have, there are a number of additional comments that we got from staff, which we can certainly address. And the plans that I have before you actually have some additional notations on them, I just didn't bring the paper to dump on the, on the commission. So, we added some detail for the ADA signage, you know, zoning compliance table revisions, we, the reference to the zoning board of appeals variances, the loading spaces have been dimensioned. We've added note regarding the dumpster. From a landscape standpoint, we have added some additional landscaping, and we've added some additional notes for Phase Two regarding the seed mixture, you know, the planting around the light pole bases, and the adequacy of the rear buffer. One item that we talked about at length during the last hearing had to do with the request for additional plantings at the base of the boulder riprap slope. We did provide additional shrubs there, but I'll get to these pictures going ahead, but when, when we get out there, that, that slope is constructed, and there's a curtain drain at the base of that, which has a perforated pipe, and it conveys stormwater as it runs down that slope. And it's a very narrow strip of area for actually, for us to install additional plantings. So, while we were able to accommodate shrubs through that area, trying to put anything larger, you know, even like an arborvitae, that's just going to have a much larger root, you know, root ball, and it's going to kind of create too large of an area, so we didn't really have enough room to do anything more of a vertical plant through there. So, we are, we did propose additional shrubs along that, along that edge, though, and that's what we, we request the commission to consider and, and approve. I totally jumped ahead there, but I do that sometimes. From a lighting standpoint, we've made revisions to the lighting plan. I think staff has actually reviewed, and there's no further comments on that. Our floor plan, there were some staff comments regarding the floor plan, and showing net square footage versus gross square footage. We can certainly make those modifications to satisfy staff comments. We're talking about a very negligible overall area, and we have over twenty, we have twenty parking spaces in excess of what's required based on the uses. So, we don't see an issue with that and that comment. Again, we, we showed a proposed Phase Two plan in the last hearing. We've represented to the commission that this is something we're actively working on, and we actually have a preliminary rendering from a building standpoint, too. So, this is, this is a, this is a real deal thing that we're going to be bringing in, and we're really excited about working on this application. So, since we did get comments, revised comments from, from Will, I, I think we addressed the majority of the comments we discussed that the commission was concerned with, but we're happy to kind of run through Will's comments again. We'll try to do it briefly. One item that was noted in our, in our cover letter for the last, the last set of drawings that we delivered last Wednesday, I wanted to make sure we pointed out. Because we talked about the removal of all of the, everything that's currently stored outside, the, the bins and everything else, we initially requested to have all that done by June thirtieth of, of this year. We'd actually like to request to modify that to July thirty-first. We'd like an additional month to get all those cans out of there, and we did provide that in our, in the narrative of our cover letter. But, so that's the, that, that would be a modified date, we're requesting the commission allow us to have till July thirty-first to have all those cans removed. And then regarding Phase Two.
All of them, or over, the ones that have already exceeded six thousand square feet?
The ones that would exceed the permissible outdoor storage area.
But not all of them?
Not all of them, no. Just the ones that would be outside of the limit of that six thousand square feet that we're proposing. And then, for the timing for Phase Two, we had a lot of discussion about kind of what that trigger would be, and how do we, how do we kind of establish more defined deadlines. So, we're proposing that, is if construction for Phase Two has not commenced by July first of two thousand twenty, and by commenced, I mean, we've had a pre-construction meeting, and there's equipment on site, and there's a shovel in the ground, that's, that's construction starting. So, so, you know, a pre-construction meeting would have happened, have to have happened before then in order for us to meet that deadline. So, and if, if on July first that hasn't commenced, then all the improvements will be completed by September first of two thousand twenty. So, we tried to create like, like two trigger dates there, so it would establish when, when those things would be done.
I, I misunderstood when we were talking about this at our last meeting. So, you're, you're talking about not starting Phase Two for another year and four months, five months?
Yes, just because by the.
I, I misunderstood. I thought you were going to be starting this July.
We're, we're, we're starting the permitting for Phase Two immediately. We're, or, we're working on those, those designs now. My concern is, the timing it takes to get through an approval, and then the review of approval process, and getting a building permit issued, and getting a pre-construction meeting, that is what, there's a longer duration, that a lot of that is out of our control. So, that.
You think it's a fifteen to sixteen-month process?
I do. I do, unfortunately. Yeah. We're, we're going to work as fast as possible. We want to streamline that as much as we can, but we have applications that were approved last October that were still finishing the review of approval. So, I can't control, there's some things I just can't control.
Okay.
So, so to go through, so those are just some of the first items that I want to talk about, for the rest of Will's comments. You know, he's looking for additional information regarding the conformance with the, with the regulations. We can certainly restate everything that's in the regs, but from a, from a plan standpoint, we comply with all the requirements. I can read them if the commission wants to, so it's on the record, but we comply with all those requirements regarding eight point two, point three oh, and then eight point, two point two. Number two, the outdoor storage and dumpster containers within the landscaping business is permissible, provided the same complies with the town standards, and there's concern of, and again, we're proposing to have a six thousand square foot area, twenty percent. We're proposing to demarcate that with boulders, to create a physical demarcation in the field of where that area is, so it's, so it's clear.
And that's a temporary location?
And it's, and it's a temporary location only for the duration of, while Phase One is still there, as we, because once we work the Phase Two, those are going to be moved, and they're going to be potentially relocated and demarcated in a different manner. So, we just want to, we're proposing and requesting the commission to approve this area to be demarcated with boulders now until we start Phase Two. And there was also a comment from Will regarding the surface treatment of what outdoor storage can be, and it has to be paved. Section six point one, point thirteen E three allows for alternative surface treatment to be something else. We think the material that's out there now is adequate for us to provide temporary outdoor storage in the.
What's out there?
Well, it's a combination of millings and gravel. So, we think that's sufficient, and again, even as part of what we talked about was, we're not proposing to remove all those millings now, we want to leave those in place until we start Phase Two construction. And if we don't start Phase Two construction, we'll remove them at that time and, and provide the seed mixture as we proposed.
Why not put these dumpsters in their permanent location?
Well, because in order to, from a, from a planning standpoint, from a, from a permanent location, we're likely going to be proposing to provide that outdoor storage in the location here, adjacent to the landscaping and arborist use. And if we were to propose that now, we would have to go to wetlands to pursue a wetlands permit, because it'd be additional disturbance in the regulated activity, or work in the regulated activity. Everything else, you know, we've met with, we met with staff, we reviewed this, and during that meeting, we said, if we can limit all of our proposed improvements as part of this to be outside of the regulated area, so we're not disturbing that, we wouldn't have to go to wetlands in order to get this certificate of occupancy issued. So, that's why we're not proposing to move those now, because we don't want to have to add the additional permit requirement from wetlands to put them there.
So, the, this, your permanent location for the dumpsters will fall into the November first to two thousand twenty deadline?
Correct. It'll be part of that, that approval for Phase Two. And, and actually, if, if the commission feels strongly about boulders not being a, an allowable way to demarcate these, if, if the commission wanted to say by, if, if once Phase Two comes, right, if we don't have to move the outdoor storage, because, or, excuse me, if Phase Two never happens, and we don't move the outdoor storage, but we restore the area to seed mixture, if the commission feels strongly that we need to put a fence around it, I'm sure the applicant will be fine, happy to accept that as a condition. But again, this is a temporary thing until we start construction for Phase Two. Continuing on through Will's comments, the, the narrative regarding some of the details of the tenants, the warehouse tenant is Metals Distribution Company. The warehouse spaces used to store aluminum stock for distribution to manufacturers. We can provide additional narrative regarding that use to satisfy town staff. Again, the floor areas regarding the building footprint we provided, again, we measured interior building walls. We can revise that plan to show gross square footage measured for perimeter building walls. And again, we have more than adequate parking, so it's not an issue from a zoning standpoint. He's looking for additional labeling on the plans, we can add that. The conservation easement, we did have, we did provide the map, and again, Attorney Paul Sole did, did draft that conservation easement, and he'll be working with Will to make sure it satisfies town staff requirements. The wetland permit verification, again, we, we did have a meeting with staff, and, and the wetlands agent was there, Scott was there, and we talked about from a permitting approach standpoint, in order to get the C O issued, it was our, everyone's understanding at that meeting that we would not have a requirement to go to wetlands, so we're requesting that staff assist with that from a verification standpoint. If, if I have to go to the, you know, if we have to submit additional letters or anything, we can do that, but I think it was our understanding based on our meetings and our discussions to date with staff that we had checked that box off. The proposed implementation schedule, again, we talked about that, and, and yes, it is the, so, just to reiterate, what would happen as part of Phase One, before July thirty-first two thousand nineteen is what we're requesting, the installation, just that front light pole, the landscaping as shown on this plan, recording of the conservation easement, and the installation of boundary markers for the conservation easement. This is what we want to do before July thirty-first of this year.
And the ADA parking?
And the ADA parking, correct. Excuse me. Yes, that's correct. And those, and that is shown on this plan with additional spots and details showing how that would happen. And then the complete, completion of the remaining Phase One building related improvements, again, would be based on that schedule that I outlined earlier.
And what happens on August first, if those things aren't done?
August first?
Yeah, you run to July thirty-first to do the Phase One stuff. What happens on August first if it's not done?
Well, I think. Well, the commission has, the commission has a bond as part of this. We've talked about, and the commission has held that bond since two thousand seven, a cash bond, which the. a cash bond which the, which the town has, you know, I'm sure gratefully had a lot of interest in that money that sat in that account for a long time.
Probably a reseventeen cents.
Huh?
Probably a reseventeen cents.
It's, it's, it's not a small amount of cash, but what we talked about and what's happened on other applications is where we, what typically happens is that, that restoration bond converts into a performance bond. So if something doesn't happen, what has happened on similar applications is the commission either can pull that bond to do what needs to get done or they can issue a cease and desist and close down the bill.
Do you know of any instance of this town pulling a bond?
I, I don't.
It doesn't happen?
Well, I-
So in, in all reality, what's gonna happen on, on August 1st if everything you say is gonna be done isn't done? Cause you know they're not gonna-
That's not up to me. That's up to the commission.
Well, you're asking for a full certificate of occupancy or a conditional?
I think we've talked about conditional.
So you're gonna get a conditional certificate of zoning compliance that's going to have an expiration date on it?
Correct.
Of July 31st.
Correct.
And if you're not done, you no longer have a certificate of zoning compliance.
Correct.
And that's, that's where it stands, Will.
Okay. Just going through the rest of, of Will's comments just to make sure we touch everything. The, he had other comments on the zoning location survey. We can address those. The site plan layouts, we actually moved a lot of those notes and we addressed those. The, he did comment again on the pavement from the parking, in between the edge of the parking spaces in the building. We talked about this at the last hearing. We're requesting to leave that in. We don't wanna create that additional disturbance. We can add notation regarding the rear traffic control island and how that would be modified as part of Phase Two. We can add that to the, to the plan. But again, from a landscape standpoint, we're requesting the commission approve what's been submitted and was submitted last, last Wednesday. Additional revision to the zoning compliance table, we can make that. We can add those notes. The loading space requirement table has been added to the site plan. The loading spaces have been dimensioned. The, and we've shown the existing wall mounted handicap parking signage, the plan that I have before you, what we'll provide for the staff. The landscape plan, again, we're requesting the commission approve what we've proposed. Will is still looking for some additional plantings in this location, but we have all of our underground utilities running into the building here. And then, you know, we think that again, based on what we're proposing is adequate from a landscape standpoint.
Those aren't the places I was saying. It's here and here. At the parking lot, on the edge of the parking lot, this side of the parking lot and in front of the parking lot here.
You know, again, I think, I think the, the, the site itself is maintained in a very clean, you know, aesthetically pleasing condition. The applicant, while he didn't install the landscaping for the previous approval, he did install some very large, nice robust trees and we're looking to supplement that what's out there. So we're requesting the commission approve it. We added a notation regarding the, the verification of adequacy of existing vegetation for the rear buffer screening. We added that note. The seating specification has been expanded to keep the mowing limitations. You know, we can add a note about the landscaping for Phase Two. And then again, we did add shrubs or long the base of that drive and that slope, but, but we, we did look and we measured. Here, we, we thought a lot about what else we could plant there that could give us maybe some more vertical relief. But just based on that width, we didn't wanna create additional, you know, that ridges. This is what we're requesting the commission approve. So with that, happy to see if the commission has any other comments.
I would like to comment about the, the landscaping along the north side of the driveway. You know, when, at our last meeting, we spoke about trying to give some vertical relief. You know, that, that entire slope was supposed to be graded, topsoil seeded landscape. And now we have a big riprap slope which is not what was on the approved plan. So we asked to get some vertical relief by putting some trees in there. You have, you have a proposed pin oak down at the street and you have another pin oak up towards the back. It's about 230 feet between them. I would like to see at least three more trees in there. Now, you may have to create some tree wells behind your curtain drain and build wells with the riprap that you have there, but I would really like to see some kind of substantial vertical relief visual along the front of that line. You've, you've proposed to put in, creeping junipers and beerberries that grow two to 12 inches high. So you, you're not, you're putting ground cover down. You're not giving us any, anything to break up that big riprap slope and that's what we were looking for.
So, so is, is the commission, and again, to break up that slope, you're breaking up that slope from a view from the building?
And from the driveway and from the street.
But the, but the street is, we're, we're, from a landscaping standpoint, we are enhancing and supplementing the landscaping, you know, from the streets, from the street perspective. And we're talking about adding additional trees, which is basically a building, a drive aisle and a slope and, and-
You have full view of that slope when you drive up the street.
The, we have, we have constraints from a, from a width standpoint, but you know, we can certainly look to see what we can do. Cause I thought, I said, what about like maybe some arborvitae? Those are more columnar, something small that could maybe fit within that three foot gap that we have. And frankly, we kinda, our landscape architect who isn't here this evening, didn't really feel that that would give us a good aesthetic. It wouldn't look neat.
You're not gonna get a tree in here. It's too close to the curb edge.
Exactly.
But, so the only other option is somewhere in here getting a well. I mean, actually, this end isn't as steep as it is at the other end where the building is. That, you know, that's more towards the building, but towards the front, it's not as steep as that.
Where are you getting the boulders from to mark here?
There are other available towards the back of the property.
They're not coming off that slope.
We didn't wanna touch the slope. The slope is stable. The slope has been there for 12 years. We don't wanna do anything with the slope.
I, I would request that you take another look at how you can get some, something more than a 12 inch high ground cover along that side of the driveway. You know, a, a creeping juniper and a six or eight inch high little shrub type bushes, all that's gonna do is collect windblown debris and leaves.
I, I know.
They're likely not to survive either, cause all the snow's gonna be sitting right there in front of them.
We're, we're dealing with a very constrained area where we're trying to maximize what we can. I mean, even, even, it's just incredibly tight through here. And we're trying to minimize the amount of disturbance that we're gonna create, but-
Well, it won't be anywhere near the amount of disturbance if you haven't ripped that whole slope out and redo it according to the plan.
You're absolutely right. And that's why we're here requesting the modification to what was previously approved.
And I, I think, you know, I'm inclined to say leave the pavement in front of the building, you know. I understand your, your desire to not fill in the area in the front yard where your utilities come in. So, as a trade-off, I'd like to see something along that north slope, like three trees with some, with some 24 to 36 inch shrubs of some type clustered around the bottom. There's some space in the front. Isn't that close to the street?
There is and we propose, and we propose landscaping in, in that area. You know, we, we propose additional landscaping here.
The more you put in there, it'll go to block that slope somewhat.
Correct. And you can see that on our landscape plan. We are proposing some additional, additional trees, some additional shrubs. And there's also a light pole here with some additional plantings at the base. But it was, you know, and we can, we can see if we can add another tree in that area.
Looks like you could add some shrubs in there too.
So we have a tree right in the corner. We have a series of shrubs. We have a light pole. We have additional shrubs around that. And then we were showing the additional plantings along that base. It's a very narrow area.
Why don't you have a conversation with your landscape architect and see what he can propose?
Mary?
She can propose.
And, and I did, and we did, and we can revisit it again.
To get something with some vertical height to it, not ground cover. You know, that's, that's what we talked about at the last meeting. We wanted to have something to visually break up that slope.
And we walked out of here with all intents of doing that and, and I said, go out there, measure it, get creative, find something that we think that can grow in that minimum width. And her recommendations were this, you know, and Will, you, Will, you have a great landscape eye and you've done, you've made some great suggestions that we've been able to implement. Based on our constraints, what would you-
Yeah, you're stuck. I mean, the only way you're gonna get a place for a tree is to dig out a tree well. You're gonna dig out a little area of the, the rock. You have to create a little well with the rock and give yourself a pocket. I don't know what else you could do. You can't create real estate that isn't there. I mean, those plants have a very unlikely survival rate anyway, cause they're way too close to the curb based on industrial site. And the trucks and the snow are just gonna obliterate it.
Those rocks were there from day one?
They were put there.
So how do we get from topsoil and seed to-
We just throw some rocks in the spot?
Well, that's, that's, that's another question that-
The slope was too steep. It was too steep.
You know, one of the other, one of the other components that I don't think was really theorized when this project was initially approved was that steep slope and the stabilization of that steep slope.
But the house didn't come back, Kevin. I mean, that's such a problem. They didn't come back. I mean-
And, and I, I'm with you. And, and they were, they were, they had a number of different team members that came back before this commission for years. They spent, they spent, you know, almost a year trying to get landscaping, the, the actual use of the owner as a permitted use in the zone. I'm with you. I get that. But there's also a tremendous amount of disturbance upgrading from this, which is affecting the runoff down this hill with the mission. You know, we're, we're, the activity up at the top of this hill and the increased runoff associated with that, which is not permitted, is contributing to the situation that we have and why that stabilization is needed.
Let's see if any of the other commissioners have any other questions.
Ryan?
Uh, no other questions.
Kevin, does that little strip of grass turn green when you spray it back?
I think it does. I mean, it's, it's, it's a little bit, you know, there's some greenery to it now. It looks like there's definitely some grass in there. So.
There's not much room to do anything. You got a weeping drain in there, right?
Correct.
It's perforated pipe?
Yep, perforated pipe, stone trench.
If I learned anything in school, it's got roots, right? Go into the weeping drain and screw that up.
If we were to propose a larger tree, yes, it could, it could grow into that.
That's just my own personal feeling. I just say leave it like that. Make sure you keep it cut. That's, that's my own personal opinion, so. Cause it's in a industrial area.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm still trying to, and it, sometimes it takes a while to, to, to work through my mind how we go from, from topsoil and seed and then we're just gonna throw some rocks over here and then we're gonna complain about having trees there. So I'm still tossing my head around that. And also your 16 month process on Phase Two. I'm not nearly as experienced in, in that as, as you are, Kev, but it just seems like a long time to me. So you have, so Mary?
Yes.
The landscape professional's gone out there multiple times and she can't come up with anything?
Not based on the width that's there?
Other than some, some little trees that, that the deer in that area are gonna swallow up real quick.
But based on, based on the constraints in that specific area at the toe of that slope and how that drainage is constructed? You know, the, the view from the-
No, you clearly have to go into the rock if you wanna create a tree. I mean, that strip is not gonna support a single tree. It's gonna not really survive other than a weed. Cause there are some weed trees you can put one end on the other end.
Well, what's the alternatives? If we didn't go, if we didn't go into the rock, what else, what can we put there to break it up?
If you don't go into the rock, there's really nothing you can do to break it up.
You can't put-
Cause the, the drain really kinda icing it. If you didn't have the drain, it would be easier to do the tree, cause you could get closer to the rock. But the drains, if you want the drain to work, the trees is gonna live with that.
Do you have any higher shrubs over there?
No, there's just not enough area between the curb and the drain. I mean, it's, it's not big enough to hold anything though. It's gonna survive.
How big is that?
It's three feet?
Is that?
From the face of curb to the stone itself?
I mean, you gotta remember too, that, you know, we live in winter and all the snow goes right down and they plow up the driveway. It's gonna rain all there. And then you got all the drainage coming down that thing, so it's very gonna wet as well. I mean, you can see the grass is not really grass. That's, that's really weedy mess.
It's having a hard time.
Yeah. I mean, there's probably no real topsoil there either, but.
You know, I mean-
I mean, I don't know if you could do, I mean, animal. There are some tree wells that they use in urban areas that they can get around drains and stuff, but that's- I mean, I do think at the, the end by the driveway where the slope of the rocks isn't that bad, it'd be a lot easier to get at, you know, well, not at the end, but even up to where the driveway comes into the parking lot, up that whole stretch in the, in the Q area.
Yeah. And we are proposing a tree there.
Well, I know. It's not by the rock. It's in front of our, you go back to your photo.
Yeah, go back to that photo from the street. There you go.
Yeah, no.
The other way.
You know, your tree-
There you go.
Yeah. So that tree is, is somewhere, yeah, over there. As you move in, you know, and even a little further, that whole stretch where the, where the Q area is- You know, it's not that, the slope isn't as steep.
Right.
You probably could work the rocks a lot, a lot easier.
I think we need to work.
You have some destabilization above the rocks anyway. You can see it, you know, above it.
It's all proper.
Is it?
Yeah.
You know, that area, I think you can probably manage to get a tree well without it doing much, having to do much, cause the, the vertical slope isn't all that bad. You know, you could get in, some evergreen shrubs that would help a longer view as well and get away from the drain. Cause the drain pipe is further away at that end too.
Yeah, there, there's a little more room. We do have our light pole going in and we could, we could try to maybe pull this closer, so it's closer to the base.
Well, I mean, if you go more to the other, to where the QP and DG, yeah, there, in that area, that stone, you probably could get a, a well in there without affecting your slope stabilization.
We're, we're happy to, we're happy to try to do the best we can.
And I think there was a tree in that island too, but I don't see it now.
There's an, uh, it says existing tree to remain.
Oh, okay. Is there a tree there?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so Kevin, are you willing to work with staff to, to get something like this done?
We are. We, we, and where there's, where there's, where there's opportunity for us to fit something that can survive, we're totally willing to work with staff to try to make that happen.
Right. But I wanted to get into a pissing match. I just wanna get this-
We don't like to do that either.
By the saying too is, is basically, we don't wanna get into that.
Right.
We want, wanna be able to work with the staff and do the best you can.
If, if it gets to that point, they just have to come back to the commission. That's all.
Can you go back to your landscape plan? Can you go back to your landscape plan? Do you have the utility shot?
Yeah.
Oh, shoot. I was gonna say, where that W is, would've been another place you could've done some.
Right.
You know, like a spruce tree or something, and that would've blocked that street view.
And, and I think, and I, I do think that, you know, to, to, to Chairman Porter, to your point, from the street itself, yes, you can see it along Enterprise Drive, but, you know, we're adding and we're proposing additional tree here, additional tree here, additional tree, you know, additional trees and shrubs along this frontage, which should provide more relief if you're driving up Enterprise Drive, um, towards the rear of the park. So as you look to the left, it's gonna be a much better aesthetic along the frontage. And once you're coming down Enterprise Drive, it's kinda like out of sight, out of mind as soon as you drive by the driveway anyways.
It's behind you.
Do you know how accurate those utility lines are?
Um, fairly accurate. I'm pretty sure they were from a couple forty days from utility market.
Do you think you'll have all this done by July thirty first?
For the phase one, the landscaping and the landscaping, the light pole, the handicap parking spaces? Yes. And the boulders for the six thousand square feet?
Enough time for you to get this done, because I, I really don't wanna see you back in here. I'd like, I just.
I wanna see you back in when we're proposing a new building. That's what I, when I wanna see you back in here.
No, that's fine. I'm just saying, are you sure you have enough time for your light?
Phase, yes. And that's, that is why, because once we talked about having all those cans removed and all that additional outside storage, that is why we're requesting an additional month.
No, with this, by July thirty first.
Yes.
I'm done too.
Yes.
Thank you.
Michael?
I'm more interested in seeing the conservation these guys in the back, so that'll come. I have no other questions.
Will? Since you're here.
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Well, since this is a public hearing, and we do have members of the public here, let's see what they have to say. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Name and address for the record, please.
Brian Atherton, Northeast Investment Realty, licensed real estate broker, Seven Black Walnut Drive, Newtown, Connecticut. I just wanna thank the commission. I've been involved with it, the Medico's, for ten years, so I've been part of the original team. Uh, when Jim and Shay built this building, they're not developers. Um, I don't know if you know anything about Jim and their building. They, they made some mistakes in the past, we all do, but they run a top-notch business, every piece of equipment, you can eat off of it. They're very thorough, they're very detailed. Unfortunately, when the recession hit in two thousand and seven, um, like most people, they ran out of money. We had no tenants. Uh, we may not have been able to finish the project as they would've liked. But now we have a tenant, and a tenant that's a credit-worthy tenant that's gonna add a lot of tax dollars for equipment and processing or manufacturing and warehouse that they do. So Jim and Shay are motivated and it's incentivized, so they will complete this project, unlike two thousand and seven. I just wanna thank the commission for the consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak in favor? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Any general questions or comments? Back to you, Mr. Soling.
You know, again, I just, I appreciate the commission's consideration for this, and I know these aren't the type of applications that the commission likes to see, but I think this, this application is a good step in the right direction to, to take a property that's had some issues and get it back into a better place. Um, and, uh, you know, appreciate staff, you know, working with staff to kinda try to get to where we are, and the commission's feedback at the last hearing, and hopefully, I think we've, we've done our best to address the comments and the concerns, and that's it. Appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. All right, so, information thing? Is there more information that you would like to get through the public hearing process, or do you wanna close this hearing?
I would say close.
Close.
Shut, close. Are you gonna work with staff to, to, to address the landscape?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could close it.
We're closed. Nine twenty-three. Okay, item number eleven. Planning Zoning Commission Monroe, Connecticut, notice of public hearing to be held April fourth, two thousand and nineteen. According to Connecticut General Statute, section eight dash seven D, a public hearing will be held in the Town Hall Council Chambers, Seventh Pan Hill Road, Monroe, Connecticut, on Thursday, April fourth, two thousand and nineteen, at seven PM or soon thereafter concerning the following. RAA two thousand and nineteen dash oh four, file number one zero zero five E, zoning regulation text amendment, minor site plan. Planning Zoning Commission Propose zoning regulations, text amendments, amending and establishing procedural and permit regulations pertaining to the review and approval of minor site plan approvals is delegated to administrative staff and related amendments. We have for exhibits, Will.
I don't, my numbers and your numbers don't add up.
What numbers?
Uh, well, the, the public notice was file number one zero zero five E, and our agenda is one zero zero four E.
That's just the file number, this is project RAA two nineteen oh three?
RAA.
Two now, two thousand and nineteen dash oh three.
Oh, the legal notice was oh four.
I just wanna be on the same page with the numbers.
Okay, but the project was described as a zoning text amendment first.
So either our agenda's wrong or our legal notice is wrong.
It's not very material, it's just a project internal house number. The description and legal notice describe the, what the proposal is, and that's what the legal notice is for. So I don't see it as a problem unless the commission wants to renotice it.
But what, which is?
Um, I have on my project file, RAA two thousand and nineteen oh three, file one zero zero four E.
That's what's on the agenda.
That's what's on the agenda, the legal notice is incorrect.
Right. Again, it's just a file number, um, but it depends what you wanna do.
I wanna renotice it.
Okay. We can go forward with tonight's hearing and just renotice it and just adjourn the hearing, or we could wait till then?
Let's just table this, renotice it, and bring it up at the next appropriate time. Site plan, review and permanent amendment modifications, we have none. Deliberations and determinations. Time extensions, SEP dash one dash oh seven dash S, file number one four five three K, seventy-four Enterprise Drive. Request one-year extension to complete site improvements. Welcome back, Mr. Infante.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Mike Infante, Twenty-Nine Vintage Road, Trumbull. I am here tonight representing MMI of Monroe LLC for the property on seventy-four Enterprise Drive. At this time, we're requesting a one-year extension to be added on to the extension that we received in the last year, which I believe expires in August of this year. The reason for this extension.
It expires in June.
Excuse me?
It expires in June.
That's what I thought, but I was told.
Well, that's what, that's, I'm reading from your request.
Oh, all right, that was, I made a mistake when I sent the, uh, the request in. I was corrected by Mr. Agresta. It doesn't expire until August of this year.
Okay.
But that being said, um, and the reason for my extension at the last meeting was because we hadn't secured our financing to complete the project. At this time, we, uh, have got the financing, we have our building now fully leased, and with this, we have a commitment letter from our bank to fund us the money. And this is why I want the extension, so we can complete the project and complete everything, according to the original set of plans that was submitted to Oregon.
Okay. Just a, a little history for those of you who might not recall. Uh, Mr. Infante, you were in here fifteen or sixteen months ago requesting a, I don't know, a two- or three-year extension, and, um, at that time, it was brought up that there were numerous violations on your property. The CEO has spoken to you repeatedly over the last year or so, year and a half, concerning those violations. And we requested at that time that you come back to us with a time schedule that, that you put together based on what you were comfortable with as far as how you're gonna bring the property back into compliance and how you're gonna move forward with developing the process, your project.
Correct.
And you came back with a, with a schedule that we were very pleased with, and, um, you've missed every single milestone on that schedule for the last year and a half. And when you came back, let me finish, when you came back to us, because that extension was expiring, you came back and you promised us that you were going to get on bringing the property into compliance. And, and the CEO was out there today, I think he spoke to you today, or yesterday, whenever he was out there.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, you know, he, he took quite a few photographs that he, I believe everyone in the commission received copies of the photographs, and, you know, and I don't think we're any closer to compliance now than we were sixteen months ago.
Have you looked at the pictures, what it was sixteen months ago? That's what it is now? I mean, I've had to evict tenants because they, they wouldn't comply with zoning laws of this town. That was my biggest problem. Now, I'm also evicting a second tenant to comply with the zoning. I mean, if you look at these pictures from, from what he took yesterday, and from a, a year ago, yeah, I mean, you can see the difference.
Well. So all of the, all of the stuff that were in the pictures that he took yesterday, is, all of those vehicles and trailers and everything belongs to the tenant that you're evicting?
Uh, I'm sorry, I, what do you mean, the trailers?
Well, I'm just, there's, there's office trailers, there's.
All right, the office trailer, as I explained to him, is the, the trailer we're gonna be using to construct this building. I have no more offices in the existing building.
Okay, well, there, I, there are two office trailers on the site that I can see, and I believe. Anyway, my point is, what, what steps are you taking to try to get some of these violations remedied?
There, there is some, uh, pieces, I mean, we got rid of all the junk that he had written up. And I'm surprised you didn't put that in there, that it, this is all gone, all the junk metals and all that. I'm a little disappointed about that.
I saw that the hoop, the hoop structures are gone and, you know.
That was that, that, that was the tenant that I evicted last year.
Okay.
As far as, it was, it was junk, steel, metal, that was all taken to the junkyard. That's not there anymore. You do have, uh, uh, there's, there's two Conex boxes. That, that trailer there belongs to one of the tenants who's gonna be evicted. That, that, that was my second problem with the tenant. He spreads everything out, and I don't need this anymore. I, I, I. Now, that, that trailer there is the office trailer that we're gonna be working out of to build the building.
Okay.
That, that Conex box there has got, um, materials that are gonna be used for the building. If you go, there's another Conex box, too, on this side, I believe you took pictures of, right there. That also has materials. Compressor, we're gonna be, that, that's my equipment, we'll be using that building our, uh, building.
Do you have designated storage areas on your property, or designated parking areas where?
Well, from what I understand, we're allowed, like, twenty percent of the building size for outside storage.
In a designated area that is, you know, enclosed, shielded, screened from the street and from neighboring properties, you know, it's, yes, you are allowed twenty percent of your, of your gross floor area, you're allowed for outside storage.
Right.
But it's supposed to be in the designated storage area, not, not spread over the site.
Mr. Chapman, this, this was before the, uh, meeting in last year, the end of last year. He said, I, I said, where can I put this where it would satisfy yourself as a zoning enforcement area? He told me to put it all up at the corner, and if you scroll through there, I, I can show you.
Mike, that, he may have said that, but the reality is, I've been talking to you for several years, and the plan speaks exactly as to where you can put storage items, and it's right here. There, it's, this is obviously before the current standards with the containment and all. The approved plan has a circular drive that goes around the building. The first half of this is parking spaces. There's an area at this end, which on the approved site plan is for storage. That is the only area for outdoor storage on the approved plan. Everything else is supposed to be either building, driveway, parking lot. So all these other things that you see, that's not approved, and if it is for the second building, you need permits for all those things. You obviously don't have the permit for the second building, so you certainly shouldn't have the trailer. My understanding is this is where your office is now, isn't it?
I'm sorry?
Is this where your office is now?
Correct.
Your office that you operate under. It used to be in the building, correct?
Right.
And now you're hovering out of this trail.
Right.
That's not part of the approved plan. All these trailers are not in any area that's even designated for anything. This, I think, is, was a satellite parking area that's supposed to be developed, um.
That was, that was for future parking, correct.
Related to the second building.
Right, for the second building.
So obviously, it's not, this isn't a parking lot the way it's being used, and the second building isn't there. You know, and there's all kinds of trucks and whatnot that are not part of the approval. Now, these trucks can be parked in parking spaces, but these trucks cannot be parked in parking spaces. They're supposed to be in the building or in that storage, that limited storage area, with uses and permittees that actually have permits. This was approved as a general contractor business, and there's landscapers, there's some other guy, music guy.
Well, it was approved as a construction company.
A general contractor.
Construction company, if you read the approval.
Okay, I have read the approval.
It was all, all right.
So, Mr. Infante?
Yes.
I'm happy to hear that you've secured financing, so you can go ahead with phase two, because that's good news. What, what I would like to propose is... What, what I would like to propose is the same thing that we did fifteen or sixteen months ago. I would like you to come back to the commission with a detailed schedule of how you plan to proceed. Now, you, your current approval is good through August?
No, it's, um, I don't have a client coming. It was a June date.
Well, the, the-
No, I thought it was June.
Oh, the, the-
You, you told me it was August.
I don't have it, my command is, I'm sorry.
Well, okay, my, my point is, we have some time before your, your current extension expires. So, I would like you to come back to the commission, other detailed schedule of how you plan to proceed, when you plan to do your construction, and when you plan to get this stuff relocated into a approved storage area that's on your plan, and how you're going to bring this whole property back into compliance moving forward. And, you know, staff will work with you to give you any input you need as far as what your existing approval allows you to do, and, you know, let's try to get this done.
I'm trying to do-
I'm sure you don't want Joe coming out there every other month, you know, hounding you, and, and we don't want to send Joe out there every other month.
No, I understand that.
We just want to get this resolved.
I'm just a little surprised because there's such a big difference on what it was from, from the last time he was out there. And, and then I got hit with this thing yesterday, surprised the hell out of me. Excuse me for my language.
Well, I think you'll have to agree that the schedule that you gave us-
I, I agree with you.
-went out the window.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not arguing with you. Circumstances-
I understand, I understand, but what we want to do is move forward and get this done.
Exactly, that's what I'm trying to do.
So, why don't you come back, take some time to get that plan developed? You have, it seems like you have a couple of months before you really need to get back in here?
No, I'll be back in here, just coming, within two weeks for your next meeting.
Great. Look forward to seeing you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, SEP 2018-07, file number 1602A, 485 Pepper Street, requesting a ninety-day extension to file final plans. Will, what's, what's the story on that?
Um, we just came up, they have been actively revising the plans. They're at the, just moments away from it being endorsed, and we just ran a few days short, so they need the time extension to finish out that part of it. I do expect that to be resolved in the next week.
Okay. You have a motion?
Move to grant a ninety-day time extension to SEP 2018-07, 485 Pepper Street.
Lee on seconds. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Mayne, yes.
Yarrosi, yes.
Quarter, yes.
Lacy, yes.
Riley, yes.
Next up, SEP 2018-03, file number 1598A, 205 Monroe Turnpike, request a ninety-day extension to file final plans.
Very similar, um, there's like one or two minor changes to the plan that's needed. Um, the applicant is aware of it. The one thing that's really outstanding is there's a series of legal instruments that need to be provided. They have not provided the drafts of those yet. Um, that's really the thing that's held out, and they're still working on, well, the timeline isn't related to DOT, but that's their next hurdle as well, is getting DOT approval. And they're working on that, so. The plans are in good shape, it's just getting the legal instruments. We haven't had a draft, so.
But as far as you know, they're working on it?
That's what I've been told.
Okay. Motion?
Move to grant a ninety-day extension to SEP 2018-03, 205 Monroe Turnpike.
Second.
You have a motion, you have a second, any further discussion?
No, sir.
Call the roll.
Mayne, yes.
Yarrosi, yes.
Quarter, yes.
Lacy, yes.
Riley, yes.
All right, item thirteen, bond releases and reductions, we have none. Item fourteen, pending meeting minutes, March twenty-first, two thousand nineteen. You have a motion?
Move to accept the March twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, meeting minutes as drafted.
Second.
You have a motion, you have a second, any comments?
No, sir.
Directions, anything? Call the roll.
Mayne, yes.
Yarrosi, yes.
Quarter, yes.
Lacy, yes.
Riley, yes.
All right, um, pending application deliberations determinations. We have RAA 2019-01, file number 1002E, zoning regulation text amendment referral to Conservation Commission. This is a zoning text amendment proposed by the commission, adds new section nine point two point three D.C., requiring all commission applications, that being special exception permit site development plan subdivision, permit amendment modification, excavation, filling permit, zone boundary change, and regulation amendments be referred to the Monroe Conservation Water and Resource, Conservation and Water Resource Commission for its advisory, advisory review as part of the commission zoning application review process. Um, we sent notice to the adjacent municipalities, no response from any of them. Sent notice to Connecticut Metropolitan Council of Governments, they deemed it was of no regional impact. North Dakota Valley Council of Governments, the same. And Western Connecticut Council of Governments, the same. Was referred to the Connecticut Commissioner of Public Health and Aquarian Water Company, no response to be received. Public hearing was open and closed on March twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, and the commission finds that the proposed zoning text amendment is consistent with the goals and recommendations of the two thousand ten Towne Monroe Plan of Conservation and Development, and that it assures the commission is provided with timely and essential input on matters relative to conservation and open space issues and concerns, ensuring that long-term conservation-oriented P O C D goals and measures are considered and incorporated during the application review process, improve zoning clarity and understanding, improving customer service and implementation, and furtherance of being good stewards of the Green Monroe. Do we have a motion?
Move to accept RAA 2019-01 zoning regulations text amendment titled referral to Conservation Commission as drafted. The effective date, April fifteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
Anyone? Call the roll.
Mayne, yes.
Yarrosi, yes.
Quarter, yes.
Lacy, yes.
Riley, yes.
Next up is RAA 2019-03, file number 1004E, zoning regulation text amendment public utility facilities. Again, this is a text amendment proposed by the commission. It amends section two point two point one by adding a definition for public utility facilities and incorporating said use in section ten point one, schedule of permitted land uses by zoning district. Adjacent municipalities were noticed, regional planning agencies were noticed, Connecticut Commissioner of Public Health and Aquarian were noticed. Public hearing was open and closed on March twenty-first, two thousand nineteen. The commission finds that the proposed zoning text amendment is consistent with the goals and recommendations of the two thousand ten Towne Monroe Plan of Conservation and Development, including the furtherance of the goals and recommendations of the P O C D in regard to maintain a good qualification of permitted uses, particularly when located within residential districts, and updating permitted land use consistent with standards of current practice. You have a motion?
I am moved to approve RAA 2019-03 zoning text, like, zoning regulations text amendment public utility facility to the effect of April fifteenth, two thousand nineteen as drafted.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Mayne, yes.
Yarrosi, yes.
Quarter, yes.
Lacy, yes.
Riley, yes.
Selected items from this agenda. All right, we closed ZCA 2018-02, file number 1013D, 575 Monroe Turnpike, for the proposed zone change from RF one to B one. I would like to start deliberation on that.
I don't have any proof. They have a good mention that it's consistent with the P O C D, that-
It is, the, the P O C D identifies that area as, as one that should, where the business you should be expanded.
Okay.
I'll find. Okay. Then-
So, a draft and approval, and that includes the housekeeping comments of the engineer?
Yes.
Okay.
We did not close the daycare.
No.
Seventeen Enterprise.
Did we skip over Forty-Five Shelton Road?
That's closed.
Did we schedule what?
Forty-Five Shelton Road, the party water tank.
No, I skipped that, I, that's my, my error. SCP 2019-02, file number 1610A, Forty-Five Shelton Road, the installation of the blower on the water storage tank.
Should have proved it, but they said they would agree to put some insulation aside of the-
Well, they said that they would talk to the manufacturer about the possibility of-
Possible.
Had it.
Could there be some other sort of barrier, whether it's, you know, landscaping or, or some type of structure, type of solid fence perhaps?
Well, they, they, I think one of the commissioners asked that question, and, and they were a little bit opposed to that because they have a driveway that goes all the way around the tank?
Yes.
And that would encroach on that driveway, potentially encroach on that.
Yeah. Should be some space available.
Well, you know, the, the fact that the, the tank is pretty much surrounded by a berm around probably two-thirds of its circumference, um, and if it's true that the noise from the, from the blower is comparable to a residential central air conditioning system, I mean, if there was a house next door-
Wouldn't be a problem.
There would be an air, if they had an air conditioner, it would be no problem. And, you know, the, the neighbor informed us that she has central air, so she has a unit that's blowing or running outside of her building that's a lot closer than the one on the opposite side of the berm.
If you look at the aerial, it's not really adjacent to the daycare either, it's, it's in the back. The location of the blower?
Yeah.
Doesn't have a lot back there.
Yeah.
For seeing being a major issue. I don't know if they had a picture, I looked it up on Google.
I'm not sure what they are, too.
They didn't really show it nicely, yeah.
Starting his application, he had, uh-
If you look on Google Maps, you can see this.
I thought he had a diagram.
Well, didn't they have a topographical survey?
Go back to the zoning.
Well, that doesn't show the building.
It shows the lots, though.
Yeah, I thought there was an arrow.
That plan.
Yeah, here's the daycare building, and there's an addition here.
And the blower is-
Right back there.
Over there.
Well, I don't have an issue with it that far.
Yeah.
Yeah. And what's on the other side of that, Will?
Other side of?
That blower's going.
Yeah, this is all everything. And there's a berm, is a berm, it goes back, their property goes back to here. And this is that nursery property and the church further out. This is the church.
Well, he said he was going to look into seeing if he could have some sample, if he can, then fine, if not, I don't have an issue with it. Especially if it's on the other side of it.
That's the daycare right there.
Right, and he's putting it-
This is on existing material.
And he's putting it over on the other side of it, right?
Right here.
Yeah.
I don't see an issue.
I don't see an issue with that.
I, I would be inclined to approve it as submitted as a complaint. It's fine. Okay. Were there any, uh-
Writing it up.
Do it.
There was, uh-
They had to change the name of the street.
Yeah, and there's another added to the plan. And they were adding the trees in the front.
So, approval?
Yeah.
All right, draft and approval for that, please.
I was talking to you. I'll tell you later.
Is there anything else I forgot before we move on?
No, no, we're good.
No, you've done great for them.
Okay, thank you. Item number ten, SEP 2019-01, file number 1609A, Seventeen Enterprise Drive.
Well, it looks like a very clean and neat property, and what's there?
It is, it's, it's very, very nice and clean and walk up from the street.
Yeah. I mean, if they've agreed to put it whatever they can in there, I mean, what are we going to do about that ripper hole that's there? We definitely take it down, especially what's coming down from above. Look at the areas, you can see that's all over excavation of the, uh-
They're going to add the trees in the front. Can you take away a little bit of that side line?
Right. If they work with staff, it's-
That's what I'm saying.
Come to some agreement?
They agree to work with staff, so.
Our staff is a landscaping machine.
So, the, uh, driving into the property on the right side of the driveway, between the road and the beginning of the riprap slope, we would like to see some enhanced landscaping in that area?
Yes.
They said they were ready, right?
Yeah. They say they'll work with staff to do that.
Yeah, well, like, um, um-
You're just-
They're ready.
Right there.
The, the, what we're looking for, and that, that won't be ground cover, that will be something vertical.
Vertical.
Um, the landscaping, we're paving along the front of the building.
That was a liner, what, was it three feet or something? We should let that go. Yes, don't want to dig that out. I don't have an issue with that.
Okay, so we're going to leave the paving, pavement in front of the building. Our, our regulations call for storage areas to be delineated by either fencing or landscaping or some other means of screening, but seeing as this is a temporary location, what are your thoughts?
I say this leads the way they're doing it. I have no problem with it.
Behind the building.
Yeah.
Well, it has a timeline as well, right? It's, it goes beyond being-
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is- This is, yeah, this is just temporary, what they're talking about now, with using boulders to delineate the storage. They're not proposing to add any additional screening other than it being behind the building. So it's not visible from the street. But this will all be tied into, you know, Phase Two, it'll be relocated as part of Phase Two. Or by the deadline established, if Phase Two isn't completed, or isn't, keep on by the date of two thousand twenty. Everybody's good to that?
I might, I might not be alive by two thousand twenty. I hope you guys are here to put it to, put it to solely on that one.
I might not be around.
Whatever. There was a host of things on my memo that needed to be cleaned up.
Is that something that you can do together? The cleanup you guys can do together?
Well, it'll be conditioned with the approval.
Right, right, but you can handle it.
Incorporate those into the.
So can we revisit what the dates are? I'm kinda confused. So I got a July first, July thirty-first time period to have the Phase One completed?
Right, right, and that's the light bulb, the plantings, the ADA parking.
It was all stuff on my list plus the ADA park.
Right.
Right, okay, so the next date is, what was July first?
July first, two thousand twenty.
That was commencement of construction of Phase Two?
That's shovel in the ground.
Yeah, that's, foundation excavation begins. Permit, permit is in hand, they're digging for the foundation by July first, two thousand twenty. Otherwise.
That's when the millings have to be taken up and.
That, that'll all be taken out as part of Phase Two. And if they, if they have not started Phase Two by July first, two thousand twenty, then they have to get rid of the millings.
Yeah.
Make a permanent outside storage area that's conforms with our regulations.
But there was a date on that also, right?
That's by November, I think.
What was November?
My head's spinning.
So if they don't have construction started by July first, by November, they have to do that?
They have to have.
November first.
Taken care of.
Twenty twenty. Dateline, twenty twenty? I'll be watching it tonight around two AM.
Anything else? No, I'm talking about this, this application.
No, whatever, I mean, I'll work it in from the conversation over here, I think that was talked about.
All right. Now, are there any other applications that we should be?
I don't think you can.
No, sir.
Just wanna make sure I'm not forgetting any. I have a tendency to do that.
No, that's not true.
Okay, next up, item number sixteen, Regulation Review Amendment Work Section. We have the responses in from our R F P for the, the P O C D. There are packages in that black box right there, everybody grab one on your way out. You got the copies of all of the clauses.
How many are there?
Six or seven, there's six, six.
Wow. We had one.
You made up a summary.
Yeah, it's, some each should be. If I did, I'll email. Yeah, is it somewhere?
Yeah, email.
These are, are for your personal review.
So what I did, there's a two-page summary. The third page tells you the firm, their contact, the firm, their location, the firm, their email stuff, all that kind of stuff. Just gives you their, their, their timeframe and their, their key. The second page repeats some extra each person, it goes into more depth comparing some basic features. Like, well, the time of the week, the number of meetings that they would have with the commission, and then the public participation. The types of things that they would do, for instance, online surveys, the number of focus groups, workshops, community forums. And then a couple of them, two of the consultants also included optional add-on studies with additional fees, so those are summarized as well. But that shouldn't keep you from reading, this is a very broad.
So the. The subcommittee is meeting on Monday at five thirty to start doing an in-depth review of these. And then, once we complete that, we will report back to the full commission. Correspondence other received, I, the only thing I had, I read those two notices from the first selectman. I had no other things to report. Any commissioners have any reports?
You didn't talk about our aqua turf trip?
Why don't you talk about our aqua turf trip?
Oh, look it fast.
What did we miss?
You guys missed the.
We went on an.
We did a little family bonding. The food was phenomenal.
Food was good.
The drink was good.
Speaker that wasn't.
Speaker got beat up.
Yeah.
Poor guy, I still to this day feel awful for him. Everything he said, he, he did deserve it, he was terrible speaker, but, oh, man. I felt bad for him, but no, it was, it was nice, it was nice to. Listen, we probably didn't learn all that much from it.
No, we really didn't get anywhere.
Actually, we didn't learn anything from it?
No, well.
But I, but it was nice to, to, to see everybody outside of, of the boardroom. Really bothers me, especially for those people, I mean, before he started speaking. I can't hear you.
Yeah, the people at the table.
Before the guy even started speaking, I mean, I thought it was kinda rude to do that.
Maybe they knew something.
Yeah, the guy just. Whole group of tables, just before he started speaking.
They, the Connecticut Federation of Planning and Zoning Agencies.
I don't know what Tommy was talking about, they just got up. Like, went there for free food, and they just left. Like, I thought that was kinda rude. And to tell you the truth, you're back here, by what time do you get?
There's something about it.
The presentation, based on the information that we received, it was about how the state legislature is, has been trying to take the zoning enforcement away from the planning and zoning commissions and give it to the, the head of the local municipality.
First electman.
First electman.
And, first electman, mayor, whatever.
Yeah.
And.
Oh, he got beat up.
My understanding was that the, the organization that was sponsoring this dinner is against that. And the guy who got up and spoke.
He was for it.
He was for it.
Maybe that's why he wasn't talking too loud.
Yeah, maybe they were turning on.
They turned on the light, exactly.
Oh, man, poor guy got beat up. He's getting beat up too.
It was intentional, I guess.
It was just, it, it was very poor. But it was like, Bruno said, it was a good opportunity to relax and socialize with other commission members.
Oh, definitely.
It was good.
And a good meal.
Yeah, it was good.
I'm going back in two years.
Yes, everybody has to go in two years.
Two years.
Two years for Bill.
Two years.
Listen.
He won't be here.
Well, I won't, I'll be there as speaker. We cannot go next year, but in two years.
We gotta go.
They have a good topic next year, it might be worth it.
I mean, if they have a real speaker, but.
It wasn't that. At the end of the day, at the end of the day, in two years, Bill gets an award and we're all going.
Really?
Yeah, Bill gets an award.
Twelve years. I'll get my award.
Twelve years, right, Bill?
Twelve years.
Twelve years. Yeah, so in two years, whoever's here, we're going to honor Bill's twelve-year award.
Award.
And he's gonna put his.
For the award.
And he's gonna put his credit card at the bar and we're gonna party on him.
Hey, the beers were cheap.
Don't put that in the minutes, I was, there's a joke.
Beers were cheap.
And the soda was free.
Yeah, soda's free and the beers were cheap. Couple bucks.
You haven't closed this.
No.
We're still talking about the aqua turf.
No, this is, this is the commissioner's report. Now we have our town planner's report.
Okay, I don't see it on the agenda.
Z B A is not meeting this month, and probably not in May as well. Site of council know applications before then. The regulation's subcommittee did not meet, as the chairman indicated, they're meeting this Monday on the P O C D. Zoning Enforcement Program, thirty-one Loraine Drive, work in progress on the illegal contractor's yard. Seven eighty-two Main Street, violation of approved operation, owner contacted with eighteen, April fifteenth deadline to comply. Eighty-six eighty-eight Hyrum Road, used accessory dwelling unit by non-qualified occupant.
What's going on with that?
Is that the Historic Society building?
No, you have a owner that has invested in a, who does not reside in the dwelling.
Right, but there's a property off to the side, there's a dwelling off to the side of that, and they're renting both, they're renting the home and that.
And he doesn't live there. That's right.
Where is that?
Hyrum Hill Road. So what's going on with that?
So, a notice of violation has been issued. They're willing to comply, they haven't done it yet. So we're ready to take it up to the next level. Why, why I'm showing this, because the zoning enforcement program needs to be elevated, which it has been. And we're gonna take it to the next level. These are all formal complaints, by the way, Joe. So, the app, the owners know who the complainant is, and we wanna get it resolved. Forty-eight Pastors Walk, unregistered motor vehicle, that was resolved, it was removed. One twenty-sixth Main Street, used car sale, operating without P and Z approval. Owner contracted to resolve my, a matter, you'll see that on the next agenda. Thirty-five Oakbrook Drive, storage of unregistered boat on front lawn. Owner saying it's a lawn ornament, the town attorney.
The town attorney's gonna speak to the owner to see if they can relocate it.
Listen, they changed, they changed the flag on it now, he's got a bigger flag, bigger. Right around apart from the house there, am I right? Yeah.
Bill, do you remember, John Rhodey had the.
Yeah, right around apart from my house.
About thirty years ago.
Does he really?
It's a lawn ornament.
It's been there for four years.
The P O C D, as the, as the chairman indicated, we're meeting with the subcommittee next Monday. Will and I have been formulating questions for the subcommittee to have prepared, so we're working on that. Will put together the package, so you have that, please take that home tonight. No, no other special meetings with the commission other than that subcommittee next Monday. And the, the town issued one additional new single-family dwelling, so we're up to two.
Thank you. Anything else?
Just so that you get it now, I don't know what's gonna happen in the next few months, but if you know Bird's Eye Subdivision off of Monroe Turnpike that's been built for the last year or two. They're coming up to their deadline, which is either June or July of this year, and I don't think they're gonna make it, because that's really, they have to have the road accepted by the town council by that date. And there's no more time extensions for them.
So what happens?
I don't know.
They have to go through the process again?
In theory, we're supposed to pull the bomb.
Yeah. How much work is remaining there?
I think they're, they're substantially done with the road.
Weren't there issues with the retention basins?
Their hardest problem is, yeah, there's an issue with the basin, and at the end of the one cul-de-sac, as you recall, with the neighboring property, has a water issue. I don't know what they've done with that. Um, there's been continuous ongoing issues with erosion control on the property, but I haven't heard from them in a while, I don't know if you have, Rick, but. As you know, it takes, sorry, it takes, even when they ask for the acceptance, there's a thirty-day notice, public process. So you guys can do the math, here we are in April.
And when do they have to?
Think we should be reaching out to them now?
Yeah.
Well, after Will talked to me, I did contact them, they said they're, they have a schedule. Uh, the asphalt plants are, are opening, they, they have to do some paving.
Plants are open.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they gotta submit as-built, and so they said they can do it, so.
I'm not sure they're aware of the, the full public process to get it accepted, which is fine, but.
Maybe, maybe they should get a letter outlining the timelines and.
Yeah, I'll, I'll give them a call tomorrow, get that.
They can't come in to get the road accepted on the last day. They've gotta be at least five or six weeks ahead of that.
So I'll get, I'll get letter of completion, the schedule for the completion.
Um, it's, I don't know what street it is, is it Trailside?
Yes, Trailside subdivision. It's off of one eleven.
Okay. Anything else?
The development positive that was, you know, the replacement at the Walmart site. Um, that is no longer a project in Monroe. They, yeah. They, we had heard a month or two ago that they were, they were looking at another community. And their date for implementing the approvals, the final plans, last yesterday. And, so that's, for all sense of purpose, is not coming tomorrow.
So it's still gonna be an empty pitch?
Yeah, there is a, a general appointment at the next meeting for property at thirty-six and ten Main. That's the front property, the old Vichay property, um, up on the road frontage. Um, the, the potential developer for that is gonna come in and give a general presentation here and talk to you about what he wants to do there. I think it's just a retail project.
Yeah.
No zoning required, zoning amendments, all permitted uses.
Good.
So we got activity in twenty-five, gentlemen.
Nice.
All right.
Something good, I hope.
Everybody's good?
Can I bang together?
No. Motion to adjourn?
Yes.